Good evening. Welcome to the monthly meeting of business meeting of the Unified Government of Athens Clark County. Thank you for visiting with us tonight, both those here in the chamber and those watching us remotely on TV or on your computers. Their agenda is on the table just outside the doors and to the right. If you'd like to follow along with us and if you'd like an agenda and you're accessing us remotely, you can get one at ACCGOV.com. Those of you that are visiting tonight, if you would turn off any electronic devices you have or turn them to silent, we would appreciate it. And there are, and also if you have handouts you'd like to share with us, we hand them to Mr. Berryman or the schematics there at the table, they'll make sure that we give them. There are four opportunities for citizen input tonight. The first is on our consent agenda, if you have the agenda there, and that's items one through 11. Item two has been removed from the agenda. Then old and new business, items 13 through 22. And then we have a public hearing on our recommendations from the Planning Commission. Those are items 24 and 25. And then there's one final opportunity at the end of our meeting after we've finished our business for anything that's not on the agenda tonight that you can, any citizen can have their three minutes at the podium there to tell us anything that you'd like to first hear about. The rules of the commission allow three minutes for public comment, and there's a light on Ms. Sprattlin's desk. There's actually also a little light there at the podium. And please have your remarks finished before it turns yellow, which will let you know that you've got 30 seconds left to finish your remarks. And before we start our meeting tonight, I'd like to recognize a couple of special groups. The first one is the Neighborhood Health Center. About this time last year, they were expecting some temporary cash flow issues and asked ACC for help. Because of this organization's record of over four decades of responsible management and its value to our community, we allocated $75,000 for a bridge loan to help them through this temporary crisis. Tonight they're making the final payment as promised, and they would like to make it in person to us here tonight. And I'd like to congratulate them for making the tough decisions that it took to get back into a good, stable financial position, and also thank them for the job that they do for our community because, again, as I said, for over four decades now, they've been providing health services for the underinsured in our community. So if May Walter and who's the chairman of the Neighborhood Health Center, there you are, Mayo's looking for you, and their new CEO, Marcus Garner, would come join us to present us with a check.
As Mayor Dentson has already outlined, last year at this time, we were in a financial crisis, and we came to Athens Clark County and after meeting with the mayor and Mr. Williams, you all granted us a $75,000 loan to be repaid in three years. And we also made some promises in that meeting of things that we were going to put in place to make sure that we perfectly did not find ourselves in that situation again. We had a CFO and we affectionately called him CFno, but we have gotten, we actually did a lot better in a year's time than the board anticipated. And so we are really grateful to be here tonight along with our new CEO, Mr. Marcus Garner. We're very excited to have him, and we look forward to years of leadership and taking us in the direction that we need to go. Mr. Garner joins us from the Georgia Primary Healthcare, and he has extensive knowledge of federal qualified health centers. So we are very grateful after nationwide search to have him to lead us into our future. As Mayor Dentson said, and I'd just like to use this quote there, Martin Luther King says, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where you stand in comfort and convenience, but in controversy and adversity." But so, there was a lot of questions and a lot of concerns during that time because we weren't sure if grants was going to be distributed, not just for the Neighborhood Health Center, but for your CBPG fund and whatever. But you had enough faith in us that you granted us that loan. And it was one year ago, actually, in October 2000, that we made our first quarterly payment. So tonight, we would like to, and the actual check has already been delivered to finance.
I was going to try to figure out how we could deposit this.
It's already there. So we'd like to present to the mayor and to commission $50,000 to repay two years early the loan that you granted us and to say thank you so much that we would not have been able to continue the services that this community need without partners like you and, of course, our great staff that's committed to the services that they provide for this community and our vendors who work with us to help us overcome our shortcomings. So, again, we thank you all so much for being great partners, and we look forward to the future and where we go from here. So, we've got some great opportunities and we plan to strategically move forward and provide other services to the community that they need. Like, 40 years ago, healthcare was on the table, people were talking about it, and we're still talking about it.
But you're doing something.
Well, we're doing something about it, so we want to make sure that we continue to provide that service.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
And I'm going to embarrass May because many of you are somewhat new to Athens and don't know, May was the assistant to every mayor since we consolidated the government. She started off with Gwynn O'Looney, then Doc Eldridge, then Heidi Davison, and then she worked for me until she, until I wore out and she left. But I used to call her the real mayor of Athens because she kept that office running. Thank you, May, for that and many, many, many more things you've done. And the other group I'd like to recognize tonight is, we call it the GIC team, and that stands for Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. And this is a, this team celebrates their graduation from a three-year commitment housing program. In the fall of 2015, the Unified Government of Athens Clark County was selected to participate in the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, or GIC, a three-year program of technical assistance and cross-community sharing. GIC was launched in 2014, and the initiative grew out of Georgia's experience with the National League of Cities Affordable Housing Program. In 2005, 66 communities, or since, excuse me, since 2005, 66 communities have directly benefited from this program. The GIC partners include the founding sponsor, which was Georgia Power, the Georgia Community Affairs, the Georgia Municipal Association, University of Georgia, Family and Consumer Services, University, excuse me, UGA Public Service and Outreach. And the GIC team is composed of Athens Housing Authority, Athens Area Habitat for Humanity, Athens Area Homeless Shelter, Land Bank Authority, Athens Land Trust, Advantage Behavioral Health, Clark County School District, Board of Education, Athens Clark County Government, elected officials, ACC Government Departments of Housing and Community Development, Code Enforcement, Building Permits and Inspections. The effort required the GIC team to attend multiple retreats and hold monthly meetings over the past three years where they worked diligently to identify issues, needs, potential obstacles, and available resources specific to our community. They learned best practices in funding opportunities for housing and community development. They ultimately created a community housing work plan with clear objectives and goals to address our specific local housing needs. The GIC team goal is to target challenged, I can't get my mouth to work tonight, to target challenged multifamily developments for major redevelopment, especially mixed income, with a focus to address those that are rapidly deteriorating. And to put that in common language, most of you have probably driven around town and seen some of our really deteriorating public, or not public, but multifamily housing where over the years, as newer things are built, the students tend to move to those, and then those that are left behind gradually deteriorate more and more until they literally become slums. And that's what we're concentrating on now is to try to do something to renovate those properties into good and healthy living environments for our citizens, and the GIC team will be leading us in that. Their goal is also the priority action of the housing in the envisioned Athens Action Agenda. Housing and Built Environment is also one of the Mayor and Commission's strategic commitments, directions, and actions. And our goal is to ensure through active community engagement to allow for appropriate and diverse housing and strengthen neighborhoods by exploring and implementing programs for affordable housing that address diverse housing needs. With the average income of households not matching up with average sales price and market rate rental for homes in terms of affordability, there is an urgent need for more workforce and senior housing in our community. The Mayor and Commission is proud to collaborate, is proud of the collaborative work done by the GIC team and congratulates them for completing this program. And three years is a long commitment, and our representatives to the team were Commissioner Diane Bell and Commissioner Sharon Dickerson. Are any of your other team members, I see Rick Parker, are there any others here?
They've got the award, too.
Oh, okay, great. Well, you want to come up here and help us with it?
They'll come forward, too.
Diane and Sharon. Ms. Sprattlin, would you call a roll for us, please?
Here.
Here.
President.
President.
Here.
President.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of September 4th and September 18th?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any written communications, Ms. Sprattlin? I mentioned to you all the rules about public input with a three-minute limit, and at this time, anyone who would like to comment on our consent agenda, and those are items two through 11 with the exception of item two that's been removed, and these are items that have already been vetted in other meetings, and there'll only be one vote taken on these tonight. Would anyone, if you'd like to speak to one of these, please come to the podium and give us your name and address and let us know which number you're addressing. Anyone wish to speak to anything on the?
Madam Mayor.
Just a minor thing. I believe you said items two through whatever, and it's items one through whatever with number two removed.
Thank you.
Just to clarify.
I told you my mouth wasn't working well tonight. No one wants to speak to those? Thank you, Mr. Harrod. Would any commissioner like to remove one for, to go on the consent agenda? Ms. Parker?
Would I like to remove item four?
Four? Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, we'll discuss item four first when we get to old and new business. Do I have a motion for adoption of the rest of that?
Rest of that group? So moved.
With the exception of two and four, okay.
A weight ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Berryman.
The two ordinances, the first is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to sewer use and for other purposes. Next is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to mobile food vendor units and for other purposes. That's all.
Thank you. Now we can vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any post. We will now move to old and new business, and these are items 13 through 23, and item 12 has been removed. So if anyone would like to speak to one of those, please come and give us your name and address and let us know who you're speaking to.
My name is Cassidy Lord. I live at 915 Riverbend Parkway here in Athens, and I will be addressing item number 17. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. First of all, I would like to thank you for making my job as Vice President of the Upper Okony Watershed Network very easy. I am unfathomably grateful to live in a city and county that takes resource conservation, environmental health, and public health so seriously. The actions of this body will not only protect us all well into the future, but they set a precedent that I hope all Georgia communities will model after. The approval of the sewer use ordinance revisions and the proposed construction plans at Athens Three Water Reclamation Facilities are a perfect example of how, through our public utilities, we can provide equitable public services while promoting equitable access to both clean and adequate drinking water. If these two items as an, I see these two items as an action and goal pair. One is not successful without the other. The sewer ordinance sets nitrogen and phosphorus limits, while the WRF upgrades are the mechanism to meet that objective. Currently, only two of Athens Water Reclamation Facilities are able to meet the proposed phosphorus limits, making facility upgrades essential to reducing nutrient loading in our waterways. These items are also an affirmation of the state's work toward developing nutrient parameters in Lake Okony and Lake Sinclair downstream of us at the bottom of the Upper Okony Basin. UONE strongly encourages the development of these parameters, which take a huge step in protecting local drinking water quality. We are incredibly pleased to see ACC's willingness, willing compliance with them. This sets an excellent example for many utilities across the basin that are going to have to undertake major renovations at their own facilities. Additionally, these facility upgrades take one more step in making potable reuse in Athens Clark County a reality. There have been multiple steps put into action over the past year or two to make the, like I said, the reuse program a reality. And one of the issues with that is implant, placing the filter at the North Okony Water Reclamation Facility, which is item eight in issue, fax and issues. This is a prerequisite step of potable reuse treatment because the water has to be filtered before it can be treated. I am sorry, my mouth is not working either. Additionally, according to the Northeast Storage and Regional Commission Regional Water Plan, the basin as a whole relies on 94% surface water for our drinking water. Here in Athens Clark County, that number jumps to 98%. So we're really, really reliant on our surface sources for our drinking water. They also project a 52% increase in our population by 2050. Essentially, that's going to be two more Athens in the basin that need access to these surface sources. There's a projected 300,000 more people in the basin in that time period. The reuse system increases our water security. In fact, I spoke in support of this issue at the February 2017 Mayor and Commission meeting. There's a similar project being implemented in Barrow County, which I believe serves as evidence of project feasibility. As an organization, UONE supports steps at the local, regional, and national level that improve water quality and security in our rivers. The same, the same water that comes out of our taps.
Ms. Parker.
Oh, sorry about that. Additionally, I would just like to encourage you to protect our resources by approving option one. I would also just like to say thank you for approving my appointment to the Keep Athens Clark County Beautiful Board. I'm really excited to see what UONE and KACC-B can do together. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for your comments, and also thank you for serving on that board. Mr. Dewey.
Tyler Dewey, 1075 West Broad Street. I wish I had more time tonight to talk to you about how excited I am about Athens in Motion. It will really create, help create a more livable community in Athens that is more accessible for all Athenians, but with time constraints, I'm going to focus my comments on item 22, Barnett Shoals. Bike Athens supports the permanent installation of the demonstration project. We support the three-lane configuration with the two-way protected bike lanes because it is safe, connected, and inexpensive. Yes, we know these three-plus-two road reconfigurations are perceived as taking something away from drivers, and that stirs the hornet's nest. However, after collecting data on traffic, ACC found that there was no measurable congestion, and we, as a community, gained so much. At Bike Athens, we don't care about wins and losses. We are not worried about who's right and who's wrong. We simply want greater equity in the transportation network. We want safer street designs. We like decisions that are data-driven, people-focused, efficient, and cost-effective. Bike Athens has been following the development of bike lane design since the early 90s. All the research about protected bike lanes and three-plus-two roadway conversions is clear. The Barnett Shoals three-plus-two reconfiguration would have significant safety benefits for drivers, for people walking, and for people on bike, and it would do so at the fraction of the cost of a bike path adjacent to the road. The three-plus-two conversion is safer for people on bike. It is also safer for people in cars. The Federal Highway Administration calls them a proven safety countermeasure. Nationwide, reconfiguring to three lanes, quote, "indicate a 19 to 47% reduction in overall crashes when a roadway reconfiguration is installed on a previously four-lane undivided facility," as well as a decrease in crashes involving drivers under 35 years of age and over 65 years of age. In a college town that wants to attract older residents, this is just the type of project we need. But we have even better local data. The Barnett Shoals study shows almost five mile per hour reduction in speed with practically net zero congestion. Before the demo project, the 85th percentile speed was 47.2 miles an hour. During the demonstration, it was reduced to 42.8. If hit by a car doing 30 miles per hour, a person has a 55% chance of surviving. At 40 miles an hour, their chances plummet to 15%. In the four-lane configuration, over 2,500 cars a day are going faster than 47 miles per hour. That is too many cars going way too fast. 42.8 miles per hour still poses a grave danger to people walking, but a five mile per hour difference is huge when it comes to the probability of surviving being hit by a car. So sure, we can vote to put the road back as it was, but if we do, we are valuing convenience over safety. We are signaling that we are willing to spend 40 times more money to value car speeds over people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey.
Hi, Carol Myers, 260 Spalding Circle. I'm here to support item 21, the Bike Pedestrian Master Plan, and item 22, Barnett Shoals reconfiguration. For two years, the Transportation Public Works Department, a citizen committee and tool design firm, worked diligently to create a 20-year bike pedestrian master plan. The plan not only produced a map of future bike lanes and sidewalks, but a process for equitably and logically building that infrastructure. The goal is to increase the number of people walking and cycling. As a member of the Bike Ped Citizen Committee and a cyclist, I couldn't be more excited about the future of biking and walking in Athens. We will draw business and industry because people want to live in a walkable and bikeable city. We will also serve the 25% of households who don't have a car or only have one vehicle. This plan is about making Athens a better place for everyone. The Barnett Shoals project exemplifies what the Bike Pedestrian Plan is all about. Though I appreciate the desire of Commissioners to accommodate cyclists with their commission design option, the idea of building an almost million-dollar multi-use trail instead of the 23,000 present design doesn't make sense. I was present for the two hours of public meeting last week in which there were many negative comments made about the new design. People complained about awful increased traffic, so I decided to see for myself. Last Tuesday, I observed the Barnett Shoals area from 7:45 to 9:00 AM, and then again from 4:30 to 5:40. I took 23 videos now posted on YouTube, which I've already shared with you. There were no traffic jams. The data collected by the Transportation Department corroborates my findings. Morning commute times increased by 14 seconds while afternoon commute times decreased by 15. Car speeds are closer to the posted speed limits. Cyclists have a protected area to ride in. Some people complained about the design, yet the design is included in the Athens in Motion Plan as a standard bike lane configuration. It is included in the design guidelines by NACTO, the National Association of City Transportation Organization, because two-lane cycle tracks improve comfort and safety, eliminate the risk of vehicle overtaking a bike, and provide a high benefit for a low implementation cost. The Commissioner-defined option presented tonight offers a separate multi-use trail that would use money set aside for future bike lanes instead of money already budgeted for repaving plus a slight bit more. But the Barnett Shoals section of the discussion, and also the Barnett Shoals section of discussion is not a Tier One project as presented in the new Bike Pedestrian Plan. Projects were prioritized based on factors such as equity, proximity to parks, schools, bus stops, critical corridors, safety, and connectivity. Funding an expensive multi-use trail for Barnett Shoals would be pushing the Eastside Project to the front of the line for funding. Are we going to go against the recommendations of our highly-paid consulting firm or staff and the data, the data equally for all neighborhoods? I acknowledge the negative reaction that many in the public have had, who I feel, however, I feel that is just an indication that we have a lot of educating to do. When we have a well-designed project that adds bike infrastructure to our bike network at a cost of 23,000, a nearly million-dollar multi-use path seems too high a price to pay because people's gut reaction to change is negative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Sophia Worth. I live at 210 White Hall Road, and I would like to actually propose to vote against the Barnett Shoals reconfiguration, but I'm still for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan for the following reasons. I, myself, commute daily from White Hall Road onto campus via bicycle, and I also commute back. And actually, the two-way lane on Barnett Shoals has created some problems for me to the point where actually, it greatly increases my commute going back to White Hall Road. And also, because I come out of the veterinary hospital, I need to cross multiple lanes of traffic to get to the other side of the road, to then only be facing traffic once I get to the end of the double-lane bike path. Now, as I said, I bike in every day, and I am for what Ms. Dickerson, Representative Dickerson, proposed, to go back to the way the bike lane was proposed. I'm against a multi-use bike path as well because, as was said earlier, it is a lot of money for something that might not necessarily be used quite that often. Instead, I would urge the committee to think about using funds like that to actually repair existing bike lanes, fill in potholes, make sure that there's no debris, because I daily encounter a lot of debris on these bike lanes, especially going down College Station, where it is very difficult to actually get out of the way of debris when you're, you know, going down the hill at 25, 30 miles an hour with cars on your side. And also, to maybe educate drivers on how to act around cyclists. I've had some of my peers and even people yell at me, "Get off the road, bike on the sidewalk." Them, especially in areas where there are no bike lanes, to me pointing out that they're maybe not aware that cyclists are allowed to be on the road even without the presence of a bike lane. Maybe implementing some sort of program that, where people who register for tags or something need to watch a short video or maybe take a small quiz, that would educate them about how to act around cyclists. The same goes for cyclists. I've seen many cyclists break the law in terms of the road. I've seen groups of mountain bikers go down Millage weaving in and out of traffic, and that makes me angry as a cyclist when I drive and I see people breaking the law. So I can understand how drivers are very, very frustrated about this. So I think the money can be spent in a much better way, and I, as I said, I'm really not for the two-way bike lane as it doesn't help my commute whatsoever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Revel, 345 Idowood Drive, Athens, 30605. I appreciate all of the other comments, pro and con. I would like to say that I am a semi avid cyclist. Now, I used to be an avid cyclist, but I got old, so that's a bad thing. You know, I've done the Athens Savannah Ride, 200 miles in two days, and now I usually ride on Fridays from my house on Idowood Drive to Winterville and back, 18 or 20 miles, and that's about it. I like bike lanes. I'm appreciative of the Firefly Trail that we will get. I did the money raiser this spring, whatever, only about 35 miles of that. But I am opposed to the configuration that we have now, and the vet, person that was commuting to the vet school kind of put it very, very plainly. It's not a good design, you know? I know that the constraints of what we had with the money and trying to cross over two lanes of traffic coming from College Station, you've got to come over, but that's not, that's a fairly easy thing to do. But when you're coming down and leaving town and the bike lanes in, you have to cross back over two lanes of traffic to get to White Hall, as she said, you know, it's a dangerous situation. It really doesn't do a whole lot. You're talking about less than a mile. You know, I appreciate the experiment that we had, but I don't think it's that effective. The number, the traffic count for bicycles is 16 per day. Not a whole lot of people. I think the biggest problem is people coming in from Barnett Shoals, if they were wanting to ride a bike, that's a pretty bad place to ride. And I've ridden there a lot and all, but I don't do that much anymore. If monies are available, I would be in favor of the Commission-defined option. I don't necessarily say, let's run to the front of the line for that, you know? We need to keep the priorities straight, but I don't think what we have now is the solution. It's really not doing a whole lot. And I, like I say, I'm an avid cyclist or semi avid. I really love bike lanes. I would like this separated, but I don't think this is a great design. Also, we have White Hall South Also, we have the White Hall South Millage Roundabout that's coming into effect. That's going to put a few more people on to Barnet Shoals, going in College Station. There are only two ways you can kind of get to the rest of Clark County from the southeast side. So, you know, if the Commission deems it, I would like for them to go to the Commission-defined option, not necessarily moving it to the front of the line, but keeping that. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Revel.
Good evening. My name is Nat Kirkendall. I live at 108 River Bottom Circle here in Athens, and I'm here representing the Oconee Rivers Greenway Commission. And on behalf of the Commission, and our executive committee, supports the approval of the Athens in Motion Plan. The AIM Plan complements the Roparian Oconee Rivers Greenway Trail System that was approved last year in our 2016 update. The Greenway Network Plan focuses on providing riverine trails to promote not only active transportation, but also public recreation and health, and an understanding of natural and cultural resources. The AIM Plan integrates the Greenway Trails with the existing and proposed, and lays out a larger matrix of street-based and trail routes. This will greatly expand safe, non-motorized transportation opportunities for the greater and greater connectivity within the county, and encourage our citizens to opt for cleaner transportation choices. Together, proposals in the Greenway Network Plan, the AIM Plan, the Firefly Trail, Rails to Trails Program will truly make Athens a bicycle and pedestrian-friendly city to be proud of. We commend the hard work and the extensive public engagement that was conducted by the AIM Advisory Committee and the Department of Transportation and Public Works, and what they invested in this project. We appreciate that and look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkendall.
I live at 6 South Stratford Drive in District 2 in Athens. I'm a 41-year resident of Clark County and a 36-year owner of a business just north of the red light at College Station Road. During my days, I have seen a lot of different traffic patterns that have been used on Barnet Shoals Road. What we have now has worked for a good while, ever since we did all of the implementing of new plumbing and all of that around, and it seems to have worked. I lost an entry into my business, but it has worked very well. I think right now, the plan that is in place is pretty much inane for to have two-way bike traffic on one side of the road, where I was told at the meeting that at Number 7 Fire Station, that you have told postal trucks and garbage trucks just to go over into the bike lane and to do their business, and that would put bike traffic heading south into head-on traffic, trying to get around these trucks. That is totally impossible. Back when I was active with my store, I would venture to say I drove that part of the road more than anybody else in Clark County because I was a delivery person during the day and during the night. I have seen too many people in the right-hand turn lane going south, turning onto College Station Road, who ran that red light going straight. It will happen again, and if you have that one lane going north, going south, and having to move over into the only right-hand lane going south, one day you will have a big collision there, and when somebody dies, that just raises that data. I do not, I fully understand safety. I fully understand educating both sides. I would like to see some requirements for bicycles. I think they should have a buy into the roads and into their responsibilities. I think they should have a license. If nothing else, that license could be a little triangle sign that fit on the back of the bike, that had the little bright orange triangle that says "slow-moving" traffic, because too many times I have seen on College Station, Barnet Shoals, Research Drive, people in total darkness that you cannot see. No lights, a little flickering light, you know, just does not count. I took a picture one night, turning onto Research Drive, which I will go back into my library to get one night, of two bikers about 20 feet apart, and the only way you could see them was the shadow, the silhouette that they made in my headlights. I think all bike riders at night should be required to wear reflective vests, the yellow vest with the tape on or something, so that as a car driver, you can be responsible, but you can't.
Ms. Waters, I'm sorry, we're out of time.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Sidney.
Hey, my name's Mark Beatty. I live at 260 Clark Drive. I just wanted to show my support for Item 22, the reconfiguration. I also cycle that route every day, and I greatly appreciated the safety improvement that I've seen. And like was said earlier, there hasn't been too much of a negative impact on the traffic during any point in the day. But I also appreciate, you know, the cons that are associated with the design. I basically just wanted to say that, you know, even if you do decide to vote no on the current design that's in place, if you could still at least keep it to three lanes or two travel lanes, and then a bike lane on either side. So either or would be great.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beatty.
My name's Micah Morlock. I live at 616 Breezy Hollow. I was at the firehouse meeting, and it was a little bit different feel than this. There was some anger and some confusion, and really felt that I needed to come and speak in response to that. I am a shop owner, a bicycle shop owner, here in town. There are three very large bike shops and a total of five bike shops here in Athens. We have three world champions, or national champion cyclists that live in this town. Our largest festival of the year is a cycling festival. This is a cycling town. We're known nationwide for being cyclists here in Athens. We have an organized group called the Winter Bike League that rides in the winter that has copied the nation over. We have been written about in Cycling Magazine for a destination to go ride your bicycle. It was commented at the firehouse meeting that someone in support of the bike lanes was, "If you build it, they will come." Well, it's not the case. We're already here. We just need a safe place to do this. And I thank you for Athens in Motion. It's just a huge step forward and a huge show of confidence in what this city can be to be a bike pedestrian community. I feel that we're behind in terms of, we like to think of ourselves as a progressive community, but if we look at our contemporaries around the southeast or even nationwide, we're way behind in terms of a safe place to ride and walk in this town. So thank you for the Athens in Motion Plan, fully supportive of that. As far as Number 22 goes, I live on the East Side. I drive that every day in peak hours of traffic, going to work and coming home. And I drive because I have to drop my kids off, otherwise I'd ride my bike. But I haven't had any negative impact for that. And if there is any time where it's a little bit backed up, it's because when I turn left to go down College Station, there's going to be a quarter mile or half mile backup when I'm on College Station going into campus. So I'm totally in support of the three lanes. It's been great. I do know that there's been a bit of confusion on both sides with the cyclist and with the drivers for the bidirectional lane, and I think it would be a little easier for everybody to understand if it was a three-lane traffic with a bike lane on either side. I don't know if that can be done separated the way this was done, and I know that the separation of the two lanes is huge. It's definitely, the data has shown that it decreases the number of deaths, which how can we not do that? But I do feel that a lane on each side would be a little bit easier for everybody to use and understand on both sides. Now, that wouldn't be the case if everything was connected, but because this was kind of on an island by itself, everybody was kind of confused. Now, if those, if that lane...
Mike, I'm going to have to get you finished.
Sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Flavia. I live on White Hall Road.
Excuse me. Give us your name again.
Flavia, F-L-A-V-I-A. I know it's a weird name. I have lived in bike-friendly cities where I solely biked, was a bike commuter, did not own a car, never feared for my life, and then I've also lived in cities that were not bike-friendly, and I was hit by a car on the second day. So I greatly appreciate that Athens is making an effort to make this city more bike-friendly, a city where there's a lot of college students who could use the roads for public transportation and for biking instead of for driving, the way my college experience was. The way the bike lanes are configured now, I think, does increase the safety of cyclists within that corridor, which friends who have biked the old corridor have told me they have had to throw themselves in a ditch before because cars did not give them enough clearance. So I think setting bike lanes on that corridor is very important for those who do wish to commute on a bike through that corridor. My only concern is, as development increases in Athens, the visibility of connecting that corridor to other roads other than Barnet Shoals. White Hall Road, we all know, is a complete nightmare between Barnet Shoals and Millage Avenue. And so I wonder if with the bike lane system that you, the two-way bike system, sorry, if there are plans to continue expanding that in the future, or if that is the only section that we need developed. If the two-way bike lane is going to extend beyond Barnet Shoals and connect to other neighborhoods beyond that, I would say you have my approval. Otherwise, I do agree that a bike lane on either side with a three-way, with two lanes and a turn lane, would probably be the safest for both cyclists and drivers to understand intuitively. I actually had to email S P L O S T to figure out how to use that two-way bike lane. So thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to give comments.
Thank you, Flavia. And it's actually a very pretty name. Anyone else wish to speak to us?
My name is Laura Carter. I live at 3710 Barnet Shoals Road. I am opposed to the current two-way configuration. I want more bike lanes because I want bikes to have a place to go and me to have a place to go when I'm driving. And right now, there are too many places that that is not the case. But this configuration is not comfortable for anybody. It is not good. If we're going to do three lanes, let's do bike lanes on either side. Ideally, you would just add more space so we can get also a broader pedestrian category, but the money is an issue. But I hope you will vote against the current configuration.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
My name is Scott Long. I live at 180 Clifton Drive. I'm the Program Director at Bike Athens. Since I'm afforded a couple minutes to talk to you all, I'd like to tell you a couple of things. Since we moved our shop to 1075 West Broad Street in the summer of 2016, we've seen a huge increase in the number of bikes we donate to people that need affordable transportation. We also see people stop in our shop because their bikes are in desperate need of repair. Often, they can't afford to pay us anything. We fix their flats, we replace their tires, we replace worn-out chains. When they have destroyed their wheels, we replace them. When their bikes don't work, we don't, when their bikes don't work, we don't stop working until they can leave our shop with a bike that can stop in an emergency. We do our best to make their bikes safe to ride again so they can get out in the streets to try and make ends meet. Last month, I donated a bike to a man that was in tears as he shook my hand at the thought that his new bike would enable him to keep his job at the chicken plant, keep his apartment that he and his wife were barely hanging on to, because in addition to all that, they just had twins. I cannot imagine what his daily struggle is like, but it's not something that is unique in this town. I want to tell you that the Bike Master Plan is a really big deal to a lot of people, most of whom don't even know it yet. I hope the Mayor Commission will use it as a resource to help build a safer and more connected city for everyone.
Thank you.
Elliot Caldwell, 327 Willow Run. Really want to thank staff, particularly Steve Decker, who is no longer with TPW but worked on the Bike Ped Master Plan, and I don't think is probably around to hear our thanks. So thanks to Steve Decker for working on that, Tool Design Group, and Ken Sherman, and the Citizens Advisory Committee. In the statewide work that I do, I get to see a lot of Bike Ped Master Plans and sort of efforts at the city and county level, and I think really this goes above and beyond anything I've seen in the state. And I think in terms of the recommendations coming out of the master plan, particularly within the context of sort of equity, connectivity, and attracting new users, but also to Scott's point, meeting the needs of users that are out there right now that desperately need bike and pedestrian infrastructure, I think we have a lot to live up to, and I think we have a lot of challenges in front of us. You know, we really want to see data-driven decision-making and sort of equity-centered implementation of this plan. I sent you all an invitation to a free session a week from this Friday as a part of the Georgia Bike Summit, where national leaders will be coming to discuss these issues. So I encourage you to come to that session at the Classic Center if you can, and feel free to contact me with any questions. So fully in support of, obviously, of 21 and the Athens in Motion Plan, and I really think, again, this puts us on the map statewide in terms of the work that we've done here. I really don't have a whole lot to add to what Tyler and Carol have said about Item 22, but I'm, obviously, I'm in support of continuing this configuration of lanes. I think one very important, it's a cliched point, but I'll make it again, you know, you don't eat an elephant in one bite. You need little bits and pieces here and there to make a whole network. And what might, what might make not a lot of sense at the moment will make a lot more sense in a larger connected network. And this piece of infrastructure, two-way protected cycle tracks are basically a gold standard of infrastructure throughout the country and throughout the world. We should have that kind of infrastructure in Athens, Clark County. I mean, I want to thank Commissioner Link for years ago bringing up that protected infrastructure is what we should be looking at and doing. Experiences she's had in Chattanooga and other places led her to talk about protected infrastructure before we even thought about this. So I think, you know, we've been talking about this for years. Folks have been talking about protected infrastructure for years, and it's time to actually put something on the ground. Let's find a way to say yes to it, deal with some of the concerns that folks have, whether it's at the intersection or some of the crossing traffic into Green Crest, et cetera. But let's not throw out a great design and a great project because we haven't figured out some of the details. I think it's an important step to move forward to, again, move on small projects that, again, at the end of the day, add up to something much greater that we can be proud of.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Hi, I'm Michael Brewer. I'm nervous. At 325 Deer Trigger Landing. Been there, well, been in Athens 30 years. And I ride that route, and I really appreciate the new Barnet Shoals protected area. I've never felt so safe in my life. And it cuts right through the old trailer park, and then I can get back on Barnet Shoals and go down Old Lexington and get home. So it's, it's great. I like it. And even driving in on my car, I appreciate how much slower the traffic's going and people not jockeying for position, you know, trying to go over, trying to pass people, trying to get into the vet's school. Actually, you've heard of Next Door, the neighborhood meetings? Well, that's been burning up, people complaining. But I actually had someone contact me on that, and he, you know, he saw that I knew stuff about bikes. He goes like, "Will you help me? I want to cycle now." He lived in Wakefield. He goes, "Now that they got that path, I'm going to, I'm going to, I work at the university. I want to bike to the university now." So, you know, build it, and they will come. And I think there'll be a lot more people all along that stretch there, that, you know, a lot of students and quick access. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Michael. There's no need anybody to be nervous up there. We're just folks like you.
Hi, I'm Patrick Dull, 115 Pioneer Court, addressing Issue Number 22. I'm opposed to the current configuration, only that on College Station Road... I'm opposed to the current configuration, only that on College Station Road, the road is wide, the bike lane works, and I'm for the bicyclist. I don't want to see anyone hurt or worse. Barnett Shoals, that strip of road is very narrow. There's a lot of traffic. Everyone knows when you've got a lot of traffic, you keep people moving, there's less road rage, there's less fuel and time wasted. I've come off of Barnett Shoals from out in the outskirts, past the school, and I noticed people backing up a little bit because they're uncertain of this new lane. And I just think that road is too narrow, really, to allow that, the bike lane. After that, when in College Station or everywhere else, it seems to work. I've been in Athens since 1969, and I've seen a lot of change through the roads, but this is one I really strongly am opposed to. Not only that, I noticed, too, coming from College Station Road onto Barnett Shoals, I was behind a fire truck, and he was having to come into the oncoming, the current oncoming lane to make that wide turn. It's a big vehicle. I can only imagine if a big rig had to make that turn, or somebody pulling a vehicle such as a car or a car trailer. You got to swing wide, and now you're into oncoming lane. And the only way that would work is if they got to back that lane up to allow the people to turn, but that's basically it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dull. Okay, don't want to leave anybody out. Is anybody that isn't?
My name is Rosemary Bowen, and I'm here to support the current new configuration of Barnett Shoals and the master plan overall. I have lived in Athens since 1991. It is such a great place, one of the best small cities in America. And I wanted to stay in that top tier of desirable, good places to live. Me, I live just off Whitehall, Whitehall Road at 585 White Circle, just past that weird turn where Barnett Shoals turns sharply towards Snap Finger, Montessori, all those nice developments, but keeps the same name. I drive back and forth on this route three to seven times each day, each way, either in my truck or my Chevy sedan, all times of day. I will admit, I was grouchy and skeptical when I saw the signs announcing the upcoming demo. But amazingly, I have not seen any difference in the flow of traffic on and around the Barnett Shoals, College Station, Gaines School Road intersection, and the roads as they lead to and from it. By the way, I don't understand why this demo, demonstration project lasted only 12 days before the vote. I think months and months of professional study and planning were devoted to it. And finally, I want to say, I am not a cycling nut. I probably have cycled fewer than 20 miles in the past 20 years. I am not PC. I am not a doctrinaire environmentalist. But the truth is, more and more people need and want an affordable alternative to vehicular transportation. Athens needs to continue its reputation of excellence and promote its tradition of smart growth, vision, and support for all its citizens, present and future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen.
I'm Catherine White, and I live in Brookstone subdivision. And I also attended the town hall meeting we had at the fire station. And a couple of things came up that I think have not been considered, and I'm in favor of a bike path that's completely off that stretch of road. Those lanes are very narrow, and since the reconfiguration, I do not have a big vehicle. And I have been hit nearly three times by people veering over into that turn lane because they do have such a large vehicle. In addition, that right turn from College Station onto Barnett Shoals, I disagree. That's backing up way past the vet's school entrance at, in the evening, as people are trying to get home. And I'm not talking about right at 5:00. It's that way at 5:30, 5:45. It's very backed up there. And like I said, I do not have a large vehicle, but it's very difficult for me, and that may reflect some of my driving skills, to make that turn without veering out into that other lane a little bit. So I think that is very dangerous. I know the fire trucks have been going up on that curb trying to make that turn. I also think that's very dangerous. So I think that while the more expensive option, I think the safest option in that stretch particularly, as narrow as it is, is to do something off-road and to continue that down Whitehall Road, because Whitehall Road is also not safe for bikes. So it needs to be completely off the road, and that's an expensive option, but it is the best option, in my opinion. The other thing is that's never been addressed to my satisfaction is ambulance access. We're getting ready to tear up South Millage, putting in the roundabout. Now we have this intersection, which is heavily congested. So as an aging person in this population, I want to know how much more time it's going to take for an ambulance to get to my house, to take me to the hospital if I need to go. And that has never been addressed in any of these meetings, and has been asked several times. And we were told they did not contact the ambulance service in this area to determine if it would have an impact on their travel times. But I don't see how it cannot have an impact if two of the three potential routes to the southeast part of the county are under construction or congested intersection. It's going to be very difficult for them to get to us in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Hi, I'm Judith Helm. I live at 180 Rocky Branch Road. I've been traveling Barnett Shoals since 1974. Today, I was going down College Station in my car following a school bus. When the school bus was ready to turn, turning right onto Barnett Shoals, he was in the oncoming lane. I think if we're going to do a bike lane on that road, we need to do it correctly, and it hasn't. The, the plan that's there now just does not seem to be the correct way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helm.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Davenport. I'm going to read my response. Patrick Davenport at 750 Morden Road. I'm all for the Bike Master Plan. I think it's a wonderful idea, but I implore the Mayor Commission to vote no on item 22. It's a half-tailing way to add bike lanes. I'm all for the Bike Master Plan and want more cyclists and bike lanes, but the lane configuration is confusing and angers a lot of residents. I've heard many complaints from a myriad of individuals. So please, Mayor Commission, rethink the reconfiguration and add more bike lanes and extend them. This would be a great idea for the upcoming SPOS 2020. And keep in mind that East Athens is, well, keep in mind that Athens is growing, and there's a lot of growth potential for the east side. Taking away car lanes is not a smart idea when there's a lot of growth potential for the east side of Athens. So please rethink item 22, and please let's do it right. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Anybody else? Don't want to rush anybody. Okay, we'll come behind the rail, and actually, I'm going to move item number 22 to the, to the top of the discussion list tonight, because I know so many of you here are interested in that. And, yes, sir.
Would you mind if we talked about the Bike Master Plan first, though?
Not at all. Yeah, we'll talk, yeah, because I think everybody here is interested in 22, is interested in 21.
Right.
So we'll, we'll talk about 21, we'll, we'll talk about 21, then 22.
Good, thank you.
And then number four, then 13.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Okay, we'll go to item number 21, which is the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. And I will remind you all here, and before we start, I'd like to thank the members of the Bike Ped Committee for all the work you've done, because there was a yeoman's amount of work that was done in this, and y'all kept your nose to the groundstone. You did it. But we've, we've only talked about bicycles tonight, and, and this is actually a plan that's for pedestrian as well as bicycles. We started out, and I'm going to pat myself on the back a little bit, or at least take credit publicly, when we started, we were only looking at a Bike Master Plan. And I discussed it with our manager and said, because bikes and pedestrians are so intertwined in their needs, that I thought we should look at pedestrians as well as bicycles. And, and I think that we have come out with, with a good plan. There are probably going to be some hiccups in it, but thank you all so much. So, Mr. Hamby, would you like to start with 21?
Sure. I do, and I'll just echo what you just said about appreciating the folks of the Citizens Advisory Committee, and the list is here. I won't go through all the names, but I certainly see Ken Sherman, Mr. Sherman, out in the audience, who was chair of the committee, and Tyler Dewey, of course, and Carol Myers, and Daisy Mathis. So those are the folks I see out there. If I'm missing somebody, I apologize. But I do have some questions for the manager about this. And it's a, it's a good plan, and I intend to support it, and I hope we can move, move it forward tonight, because I think it's given us a lot of good information. The appendix area is just a wealth of information about different costs associated with things. I think I said this at the agenda setting, that every time something comes up related to a sidewalk, how much it costs, or how much a bike lane costs, or how much a separate facility, we're always turning to the manager going, how much does this cost? But in here, you kind of have it broken down for us, so, so there's no need to ask those questions anymore of the manager. But I do have some questions about, about the plan and it's, how it, how it gives us the information. And what I see here is on page 63 is, and this was referred to a lot tonight in discussions about Barnett Shoals, if I'm reading this correctly, that's the Tier One bicycle projects, the 18 Tier One bicycle projects that, that Athens In Motion has determined need to be addressed first. Is that, is that, am I reading that correctly, Manager Williams?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then pages, in Appendix C, C2 and all this, these are, these are pedestrians by pedestrian tier. Now, this, these tiers are just for sidewalk purposes. Am I reading that correctly?
I'm trying to catch up with you.
It's on this little, it was part of an insert in mine.
It's just the, the, the sheet, so.
It's on page, I don't know what page it's, Appendix C, number two, and it reads projects by pedestrian tier. So I'm assuming that is just for, for sidewalks.
Yes, sir.
And my question is now, going back to the Tier One bicycle projects and how, I think there was some concern expressed tonight, how, how, in example, if we're looking over Barnett Shoals, if we skip over, what is, what does that mean? And, you know, I think our commission, this body, has to kind of look at these projects on a case-by-case basis. I mean, you know, if we, if we adhere to the thing of going directly down the line, it kind of doesn't make much sense, because if you look at numbers 17, 18, and 19, South Millage and North Millage Avenue, I mean, I see more cyclists on Millage Avenue than I, than I do anywhere else, really, to be honest with you, and that's, that's a heavily cycled street. But I recognize that in order to have a separate, separated bike lane on, on that street from Prince to Baxter, or from Baxter to South Lumpkin, that's going to take some time and some effort, and it's going to, and it's going to, you know, so what I'm saying is, I guess if the ones below there don't take the time and the effort as much as that one does, then why, why not, why would we not consider moving, moving stuff around or shifting stuff around as, as projects like Barnett Shoals comes up? And Pulaski, seeing some of them, some of them already have some, some bike lanes associated with them. Pulaski Street, I know, but I know they're looking at doing, doing, I guess they're laying, wanting to recommend, laying the green, the thermoplastic down. Is that, is that, am I saying that right, is what the buffered facility would mean from, from that standpoint? So I say all that, and I went through and added these up from this standpoint. I mean, if you took out the South Millage, and I'm not saying take it out, I'm saying, you know, what's going to be the legwork in order to get this done? I mean, certainly, it's a state highway. There's not a whole lot of, there's not a whole lot of right-of-way on, on both sides of it that would, that you can look towards. I mean, there's power lines on one side in that green strip, but the other side doesn't, doesn't have it. So I'm just, you know, I'm just processing in my mind which of these are going to be, we want done, but are going to take some time to do it. So when you go through and add all of them up, and if you just take, for example, South Millage Avenue out, then that comes to the low cost, the low bike cost of $5.4 million. And it seems like we have, I guess, only, what is it for SPOS, 4.3 in the bank right now from 2011, or really, not that much, but we have six, what was it, 6 million for T-SPOS? Do you all see the point I'm making, or am I just, am I just rambling? Kelly's looking at me like I'm just rambling. I need to move on.
A little about, mate.
Commissioner Parker says I'm rambling. So I'll, I'll stop, but I think you see the point I'm, I'm making there. I just, I think we have to keep an open mind about, about how this tier is developed and about, about the priorities of this. I mean, we've got to take advantage of priorities as they come along, regardless of where they are in, in the tier system, because some, like I said, are going to take longer than others. But I do, I do appreciate the work put into this, and I intend to support moving, moving along.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just picking up, really, on that concept of taking advantage of opportunities, I wanted to point a couple of things out, and like Mike and like the mayor, I just want to give public thanks to all the folks who worked on this, both on the staff side, but particularly on the citizen side, given that, I mean, really, the volume of work that went into this, in any other context, would have demanded we'd be paying the members of the public who were on this volunteer group. And I see Ken Sherman nodding his head back there. Check's in the mail, brother. There are a couple of things that we talked about at the agenda setting meeting a couple weeks ago, and staff did just a little bit of finessing in the time in between then and now, and I want to thank them for that particular chunk of work. In particular, we've had something of an interim sidewalk program in the ramp up to this, in which we've been looking at sort of high-need areas, and they did a good job weaving those high-need areas, what we called a sidewalk gap program, into this package in the last couple of weeks. And then they also acknowledged that in the long term, there are often cases when development projects emerge that are 50 feet or 80 feet from an existing piece of public sidewalk infrastructure, and they've recommended that we put a small component of our T-SPOS package in place to deal with those segments. And I think I mentioned last time that there's one underway right now that bridges Barnett Shoals, excuse me, Martin Luther King and Ruth Street, and, you know, really, another 80 feet of sidewalk would actually get the folks who are going to be living in those apartments to a place where there's a permanent sidewalk all the way up college. And so that's the kind of thing that I think we're going to be able to do successfully. I do want to point out that what we're not doing tonight with item number 21 here, is we're not spending any money on any projects other than a little bit of conceptual design work. We're not, we're not voting on laying down specific pieces of asphalt or concrete. What we are doing is saying that there are a handful of projects in which we do want to see some conceptual designs. What I would like to hear from the manager is a little bit of the implementation strategy and, and how we're going to move from, you know, this vast volume of work and prospective projects into not only concept, but engineering and then contract award.
Madam Mayor, before he does that, could I add to Commissioner Gertz's? I'd also like to, because we have two different lists here. One is pedestrian sidewalks, and one is bicycle lanes. And so in the process of answering Commissioner Gertz's question, could you talk a little bit about how those two different lists will be meshed together?
Well, so as part of the plan, and it's in there, that there are criteria used to help assign some relative priority to the projects. Obviously, it is y'all's prerogative to decide, you know, what it is you do or don't want to pursue. And much like our normal project delivery process, staff, you know, and I think in the, in the appendices, it talks about the available funding in T-SPOS in 2011. So there is a good, good amount of funding there. We would, much like tonight, approach you with a project concept for consideration and approval. And then from there, of course, staff is going to hearken back to the, the lists that have, that are embedded in this plan. And as we get these under design, we understand a little bit better what the costs are, that allows us to see how much- allows us to see how much resources is left, and we would bring forth yet another one for you to consider. So I think at any given time, we're going to have several projects in the hopper once we get started, but there are check-ins with y'all, you know, project concept, preliminary plans, award and bid, and that is the same project delivery process I anticipate here.
Just to follow up.
Yep, go ahead, follow up. I'll get back to you, Mike. I hadn't forgotten.
Thank you. I would recommend, and just appeal to the mayor, that in the months ahead, we have a work session where we can talk about what that implementation work will look like very broadly. I mean, I think even, given our experience with SPOLOST projects, you know, we've got an entirely new package of funds, and I think, as Andy noted, we've got potential commingled projects where we've got pots for bike infrastructure, pots for pedestrian infrastructure, and there are some projects, really, that are going to weave the two together. And it's just important, I think, for us as a body and for the public to know how that's going to happen. And so I think that would be just a helpful expenditure of our time. And then I would note, I mean, getting back to some of Mike's earlier comments, that it's always been my experience, when we're funding our sidewalk projects on an annual basis, that if, say, there are 10 projects that staff has proposed, in the old matrix system, you know, we might have been fine with nine of those. The 10th one might have been one that we thought of as either duplicative or unnecessary, comparative to something else in the neighborhood, or something else generally. And so there's always been a little bit of that swapping out, kind of based on understanding of community need from the commissioner's perspective, and I anticipate that will continue to be true as we move forward.
Anybody that hasn't spoken? Mike, I'm sorry. Melissa.
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to thank the committee, and thank everybody who put the initiative to put this together, because it was a whole lot of work. This is a big, fat document. It's probably close to 300 pages, maybe. And it's unfortunate that we only got this actual, physical document about four and a half days ago. I really would have liked to have had a work session and been able to spend, you know, at least a couple of weeks with the actual document, where we could have this kind of back and forth, and ask these questions, you know, with maybe the committee members present, you know, because I feel like there are some amendments that could be made, and there are definitely some things missing. You know, I pointed out during the agenda session that there wasn't a whole lot of talk about addressing roundabouts and shared use paths on roundabouts, and we did get some language from management about that, but I'd like to see it in this document. We talk about traffic calming a whole lot. I'd say the number-one thing that we hear about from our constituents is speeding traffic. And there's some of that addressed in here, but it doesn't seem to be a priority. And the first thing you can do to increase safety for cyclists and pedestrians is to slow those cars down. Tyler was pretty eloquent in pointing that out in relation to the Barnett Shoals area. You know, I feel like traffic calming needs to be, you know, a big chunk of the puzzle in increasing safety for cyclists and pedestrians. And nowhere in here is there a word about street trees. Over and over again, we see evidence in research that says that street trees not only calms traffic, but it increases folks' likeliness to want to bike or walk. I mean, I know, walking is probably my primary mode of transportation, and I will go out of my way and choose my routes based on where the shade is. So I really feel like we should have, I'm eager to go ahead and accept this document, but I want to see us have a work session where we have the opportunity to offer up amendments and ask for some of these gaps to be filled. It's super important. I mean, we've got to get started on this stuff. And, you know, Mike pointed out these Tier One projects. From what I understand, this isn't necessarily a prioritization, but, you know, these are the ID numbers of the projects. Is that correct? They're just numbered on this, you know, one to, but, you know, we're going to address these projects as opportunities come up, whether it's new development opportunities or intersection improvement opportunities, which that's another way to increase safety, is to improve. And we do have an intersection improvement item on the agenda tonight, which actually could solve some of the problems related to the Barnett Shoals Bike Project that we're talking about tonight, too. I mean, all these things overlap and are interrelated, and I kind of see this as a flexible, kind of living document that can be amended and changed to adapt to those changes in the community and as the community grows.
Melissa, you may have asked something that I wanted to find out, and you may have been about to answer it, Mr. Williams, but these numbers where they're sequential, you know, 1 through 9, that's just listing them, that's not a priority? Is that, is that correct? And what I'm referring to, Blaine, is in this amended, the first page 63, and they've got, it says ID above it, and then it's got the name of the street.
It's on page 63.
Because what a question I had was, was how do we come up with these five priorities that we have? How were those decided among the 18 projects that we have?
The Citizens Committee arrived at that, working through the consultant.
Okay.
That's great. So I'd like to offer this, though. Commissioner Link said that while y'all did just get the hard copy four and a half days ago, we did have a work session in July where the draft plan was presented, and I do believe y'all have had some versions of the electronic longer than that. So I don't want the public to be misled that this has just been foisted on y'all.
But also, the committee had a lot of work to do, and they got it done as quickly as they could. And we're also limited by weather, because we've got repaving projects, like the one on Barnett Shoals. We have a window of time that we can put paving down, and when that's the decision, part of the decision, that's a factor, too. So nothing was dropped on anybody unexpectedly. Mike, I know you want to speak, but I need to let one say about, and yet, Allison.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I also want to thank you, when this came through, for the pedestrian master plan, I think it was during budgets, and I also want to pat you on the back for adding the pedestrian component to it, because it does, as it's, in the last two years, we can see how having both of those together right now is going to be helpful. I'm good with approving the plan. Option 1A, as far as the plan, I had wondered if we didn't need a work session to approve the B part, which is the concept development, and making sure that we have a clear understanding of the criteria and how they were prioritized. But I think that getting that work session can augment our approval of this, and it doesn't need to slow it down. So that, and it could be that we had the specific topics when this was presented in draft form that had us focusing more on, when the concept for Barnett Shoals came up, remember, we had that whole concept of the connectivity that would be coming through the Kroger parking lot and replicate what's closer to the Publix area, and how the connectivity of what's happening on Barnett Shoals is the big plan, similar to the Chase Street area and that bigger picture. I think that that might have been what I got stuck on versus the overall criteria. And I think that having the committee there so that they can help with the back and forth of some of the things that you mentioned, and can clearly say that the reason, traffic calming could be, and should be, part of the three-laning, when we, there's a four-lane to a three, so they can explain to us where, why it's not included, and they're processed with it. So I also would like a work session, but it doesn't keep me from approving this tonight.
Well, we're pretty.
I know.
With work sessions between now and first of the year.
We got them, yeah, through everywhere, but.
And I may have to leave that up to Mr. Gertz to handle. Are you making motion?
I will make a motion for us to accept option 1A and B for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan branded Athens In Motion, or A-I-M.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
We have a motion seconded. You wanted some comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, and I'm going back to page 63. And the way I'm looking at this is a priority list that, and I'm hopeful that, because it says Tier One Bicycle Projects, that means priority list to me, but what I'm hopeful of is that as these come forward, we're able to, we're able to shift around as need warrants, basically, and from that standpoint. But I'd also like to suggest, too, that as we look at these Tier One projects, you know, we've got the, as pointed out in the document here, we do have the T-SPOLOST funds available for Atlanta Highway, Lexington Road, and Prince Avenue. I mean, to me, those, to me, those are Tier One projects. I mean, certainly Prince Avenue, you know, let's get moving on something there that accommodates the bike infrastructure in a way that we can move forward with that. So I don't see that in the Tier One projects, but I'm assuming that just because it's not there, doesn't mean we're going to wait until all these things get done before we move forward on that. Am I right in saying that?
Let me clarify something. The Tier One projects are not in priority order. They're just grouped.
Okay. So those can be, okay, that's all, that's my question. But to clarify also, too, just because Prince Avenue, as an example, is not listed in the Tier One project list, doesn't mean we're not going to start working on that, right?
Well, there is a differential between the Tier Ones and the Tier Twos. You know, we would think the Tier Ones are, would, at least the committee felt, working through the consultant, that the Tier Ones rated first attention, if you will.
No, and I get that.
But other safety improvements.
But, I mean, what I'm suggesting is, let's work on Tier One, but at the same time, let's move forward on some of these other projects that we have, the money's already on Prince Avenue.
Yeah, well, Prince Avenue has its own funding line item in T-SPOLOST, so of course, yes, I understand what you're saying, you're right.
All right, thank you.
Before we vote, Sharon had something she wanted to add.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to add, I share some of the concerns that Commissioner Hamby said about timing. I do think we should consider the low-hanging fruit in the Tier One as a group of 18, not necessarily elevating the five that are, and then that's my concern about the motion that's been made, because we're basically saying we're going to go ahead and move forward with the, on facts and issues, number nine, the ones that are identified, the five that are identified for bike Tier One projects, and the five that are identified as pedestrian Tier One projects. And my concern with that is, you know, we do have, we may have some, quote, shovel-ready projects, that we may be able to align with some other work that we're doing that may not be in those top five, so that discernment hasn't occurred. The Bike Ped Master Plan talks about adding projects, and yet, one of those projects doesn't add. It upgrades an existing facility, which, you know, is a concern, because I think the goal should be adding access and connectivity. There's also an argument that we would want to increase the user, you know, users in these facilities, so we would want to consider facilities that actually satisfy community desire and work within that context of area, which, in the case of Barnett Shoals Road, we've already determined, or we've heard, that there is not community desire for that, and that the Bike Ped Master Plan actually specifically lays out that that be a separated facility, which provides more protection than an on-road facility that has bollards or panels up would do. And then, and then I think equity, and I've heard, you know, equity in lots of different ways. Commissioner Hare and I have talked about this a lot, and my fellow commissioners, Parker and Link, have mentioned this in our 2020 SPOLOST project, to look at equity. And, you know, if I look at the list of the top five, the five projects that have been identified out of 18 for the pedestrian, I'm sorry, for the bicycle, 15 are inside the loop, only three are outside the loop. Those three happen to be actually, believe it or not, on the east side. So I would imagine if Commissioner Neesmith was here, he might not be so supportive of that. And I know people brought up things about, you know, the Firefly, and all these other things that we've gotten, perhaps, on the east side, whatever, but we're way far behind in connectivity and access to our inside constituents. So I think that priorities should be considered, you know, when you're looking at these priorities, we should be considering the access and connectivity, and that should receive a higher level. So I tend to, I would actually like to see we accept the Bicycle Ped Master Plan, but have one, have an opportunity to discuss which ones are going to go forward for concept development, because I'm not sure that I agree that those are the ones that make the most sense for us. I would make that a motion.
We have a substitute motion on the floor, Sarah. Second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion seconded. Did you want to add something?
Just a quick note. It's not uncommon for us to have a concept and then receive those concepts in visual form at a work session and decide, you know, we would like to make some of that movement. So, you know, it's certainly not my perception that we, if we accept both these concepts as well as the overall plan, that we're past the point of no return, you know, with having to implement these particular projects. Again, a reference to being very common in pedestrian projects, for us to swap out projects, one or two out of 10 a year, for example, as we move forward. And I certainly see that as an opportunity, once we see kind of the visual representation of these concepts.
But we'll be expending funds to do that. I mean, conceptual plans aren't free, right?
We can work on preliminary plans, which we'll come back to you.
And just generally, any order of magnitude cost, how much we're going to spend to do that, and then maybe decide to shelf one after the discussion?
I don't have a cost right now.
I guess, now, as usual, I'm getting confused, but I guess, Manager Williams, so I had asked if, on page 63, or is that a priority list, and we're going to go in order of that? I guess I'm trying to reconcile number nine, on the facts and issues, versus what I was heard, what I heard about page 63, about the concepts.
Mike, if you don't, if you don't mind, I just did that. I can tell you which ones they are. Is that what you're wanting to see?
Well, I'm looking at.
Number six, number 17, 42, 91, 99. Does that help you?
Right. Well, it does, but I understand Commissioner Dickerson's point. I mean, what, how did those get chosen, from that standpoint, and why?
And I think we're moving toward adding something to one of our work sessions for the first of the year.
I'm beginning to think we're going to need to do that.
Yeah, I think we're probably going to have to. We have a motion on the floor, and basically.
We've got two of them.
Well, we have a substitute motion that we've got to vote on first, and it's basically separating the items. It's, I understand, Ms. Dickerson, you're voting just 1A, is, that's what your motion is?
Yeah, to accept the Bike Ped Master Plan, and I guess I need to say, in direct staff, to arrange a session with the mayor and commission to discuss the prioritization of those Tier One projects, both in ped and bike.
And the reality, if we get feasibility study, those are likely going to be the ones that are going to move forward the fastest, so I understand the angst in making sure that we get, that we have a full understanding of how those were selected and why. Ms. Hared?
Thank you. So I think, like probably pretty much everybody behind the rail here, I mean, I think this is a good, good product, and I just want to make sure, I mean, for us, there's a difference between accepting and adopting. And I think what we're trying to say is, we want to accept the report, it's a good report, but at the end of the day, when it comes to spending money, the ultimate authority to do that is the mayor and commission, and we just want to make sure that the projects work, these are in, you know, that's our legal obligation. And so I think that's what the motion is trying to get at. It's not to say that we don't like the report, it's to say that we want to have some more discussion exactly on how to, we have a limited amount of money, and how to tier the projects, because there are more projects than we have money for at the moment.
And just to elaborate on that a little bit, for everybody that's here, particularly the people that worked on this, I've always been very, very careful as mayor, since I've been here, to make sure we use the word "accept" and not "adopt," because "adopt" implements something very different, that you're taking this study and you're going to move forward with it. And those ultimate decisions have to be made by the elected officials. And so there may be things in here, and I know from other studies, like, for instance, we had an economic development study my first year in office, and it was a very complex and long study, and I signed that to a committee, and they went through it in pieces, and some things were just, you know, it's what our citizens recommended, but the elected officials who had been elected to make these decisions for the community said, "No, that's not where we want to go." It doesn't mean that this won't all be implemented, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it will be implemented as presented, so. So we have a motion on the floor. Y'all ready to vote? Let's do a roll call, just to be sure, Ms. Bradlin.
Dickerson?
Yes.
No.
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 Yes.
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 Okay, so the substitute motion is failed, but that takes us back to the original motion, which is the acceptance of option 1A and B.
I have a follow-up question, so. With, I had a fact and issue's number nine, so that means we'll move forward with these concept developments, without knowing how much these concept developments are going to cost, without knowing, you know, I'm giving an example of Millage Avenue between Prince and Baxter Street, without realizing even the feasibility of that.
I've since, I've asked staff a question, and it's about $50,000 a mile for concept development? We could go and add up the segments. We could go and add up the segments to get to that number.
And we could do the concept and realize that it wouldn't work, but on some of these other ones, you wouldn't have to do a concept and realize it would work, is what I'm saying. And we only have $6 million. So we'll be doing concepts for projects we don't even have the money to spend to fix them. Or to do what the concept...
It looks like we've got over five miles of...
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if we'll be doing concepts for projects, we may not even have the money to do the actual project on.
Oh, I understand, but I... So it's five times 250...
I was just pointing that out.
I mean, we're talking about $250,000 to do the concept, if it's $50,000 a mile.
Right, but $50,000 for South Milletage Avenue from Prince to Baxter Street, the high bike cost is $4.5 million. At the end of the day, we might not have the $4.5 million, so we'll be doing a concept, but we won't be able to do the project.
Well, we're...
For quite some time.
Again, we're trying to develop several projects, get them in the hopper, you know...
Right. How did those projects... How did those five projects get chosen? For number nine?
The Citizens Committee selected them based on Drew's recommendation.
The Citizens Committee? I guess I'm looking at Tier One, is what the Citizens Committee did. Following connections are recommended, proceed into concept development with available capital funding. That's where I'm getting the kicker at. There may not be a capital funding available for each of these five projects, but there may be for some of the others that are in Tier One. That's why I thought the idea of having a work session to help explain about these concepts and what that means, and whether or not we want these five concepts, or do we want, out of the 18 projects, some other concept to be developed that could actually be a reality of getting done in a short amount of time. I mean, I'm okay with going ahead and voting for it. I do want to do that, but I just... I'm a little bit confused about number nine and how these concepts were chosen like this.
Well, how about this? Y'all have asked for a work session, which I think is obviously in order, and if y'all move forward with this, you know, we won't advance any work until we have a chance to have that work session, and y'all fully understand...
Can I make an amendment to the motion, Commissioner Wright? The motion that's on the floor? Can we just take item number nine out of the facts and issues until that work session occurs, and then we can... If these are the ones that we want to talk about after the work session, then we can either ratify it at that point in time or move forward. This is just a recommendation, I'll say that, but, you know, before staff starts, like Blaine is saying, before staff starts working on these, let's have that work session first. So take out number nine, so that we can go through and...
Big 10.
Take out number nine and 10. You see what I'm saying?
So that's actually going back to that substitute motion.
Well, it's not, really. I mean, in some ways it is, but it's taken out nine and 10, so that we make sure that we're all on the same page here. I mean, I need some... I need a better understanding about how these five were chosen. I'm not... The pedestrian ones, you know, are also, you know, some... We've got some money out there for West Broad and such as that. I see there is one for West Broad, but Atlanta Highway, and, I mean, those are some of the concepts we may want to work on first, where we have some of that money available as well for all of that. So would you accept that amendment?
So I want to make sure Commissioner Link has...
Yeah, we've got two people had something to say with Link and Gertz.
While he's... Because we still have a motion on the floor.
Right.
And I do want to capture what you're talking about, so that we can be clear of the Tier One that's moving forward in a work session, that we understand how they rose to the top. Is that...
Yes.
And by doing that, we can achieve that by taking out of the agenda report here and moving the approval... The acceptance of it forward, but we would have to a work session to find what is the new nine and 10.
Right.
For that.
Okay, that makes sense.
And if Jean captures that in the minutes, that'd be awesome.
You know, I kind of had the same confusion when I was going through this plan and came across the recommendations in the back end here. And then I remembered that on page 53 up here, we have the criteria, the prioritization criteria. So what I understand is that these projects have been chosen with some very specific criteria and a very specific ranking system based on equity, which is in public sidewalk-to-road ratio, bus service area coverage, households with no vehicle, population, community by public transit, percent in poverty over 65, percent in poverty under 18, land use, how close they are to parks and schools, and land use, how close they are to commercial and high-density residential. Oh, and also transit, critical corridors, how close they are to critical corridors, and general public input. So it's not like these were just kind of chosen randomly. They had some criteria, and they're listed and spelled out on this chart on page 53 and 54. So I feel like, you know, there's been some deliberate work that's gone into this, and some of these have already kind of been discussed. I mean, that Barber Street path is part of a concept that's already been approved. Some of these also, I believe, we've discussed in the past as well. So I'm most comfortable allowing staff to move forward with, you know, at least these five projects that are the main priority ones, so they can get started, because, you know, we might not be able to have a work session for months.
Well, that's not true.
We have a lot on our plate the next two, three, four months.
Mr. Gertz, let him speak, and then we'll... Were you asking to speak, Jared?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then Jared.
Well, I was just going to ask that we call a question, and we've got...
Well, I know y'all are tired of talking about this, but this is...
Well, no, I mean, I think it's at a point where we can vote on it. Mike has spoken about it a lot, and I don't want to cut off Kelly, but I think we should vote.
I'm going to yield the balance of my time.
We've had the question called. I have a motion to call the question. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all in favor of calling a question?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to vote on the question. Let's do a roll call. I'm sorry, once the question's called, we've got to vote.
Can we have a roll call on pulling a question?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, on calling a question, okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Jean, could you clarify what the question is?
It's a call.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
And then we'll get to that.
This is to cut off the debate?
This is to cut off the debate.
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
No.
Sale?
No.
Eric?
No.
Dickerson?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Gertz?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Wright? No. Three yes, six no.
So we're not going to cut off discussion. Kelly was next, and then Mike. Nope. Yeah, all of them have spoken. Kelly, Mike, and then Sharon.
Well, the one note that I wanted to make is that, given that everything that we've got in numbers nine and 10 as concept development possibilities are Tier One projects, so, you know, at least in the relatively near horizon, of course, by that, I mean, five or 10 years, you know, these would be implemented. And so any concept developed, we would benefit from in the years ahead, even if we do... I mean, I'm just going to pick one out of thin air, Milletage Avenue in 2023 rather than 2020. So I'd like to see staff really put some work on paper, so we can see how these concepts are moving forward. And then I think we could say at that point, you know, I'd like the South Milletage segment rather than the North Milletage segment, if we feel like that's a more appropriate move to make. And I don't think we would lose any ground by having these concepts and having that work session in conjunction.
I hope everybody understands what you said more than I did.
Well, I do, and I don't think we would either, Commissioner Gertz, but I do see the $50,000 price tag associated with each of the concepts, and just realizing that, you know, some of these, like the Pulaski Street, I mean, the low cost for that's $256,000. That's all these concepts here, so I'm kind of looking at that. I was... Guess I'm looking at it, I understand... I don't mind us looking at these concepts at some point in time, but I'm wondering, within the Tier One, and within the Tier One projects, what could we go ahead and get done? That's what I'm looking at, not just doing the dagum concept, but getting the work done. And these, I think, will take some longer cooking to do. I mean, we're obviously working already on the Barber Street one, so that one's a no-brainer there. But some of these other ones, I mean, the Cedar Shoals between Wit Davis, I mean, what kind of concept do you need there? I mean, it's already got a bike lane. Let's look at some of these others on the list here. Instead of spending the $50,000 for a Cedar Shoals between Wit Davis on that concept, I mean, we don't... That saves us $50,000 that we could apply to some other projects. So that's why I was suggesting, let's take out nine and 10, get this work session underway, and figure all these questions out. I mean, that's... We're trying to figure out what's the best thing to go for, and I'm not going to delay it any longer. I'm just, you know, I made my point, I'll vote for it, and we'll move on, but...
Well, we had... Sharon, next.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reinforce what Commissioner Hamby said, and even what Commissioner Gertz said. My understanding is, from staff, that any of those projects in the Tier One could be elevated to the top five. And that's what I'm trying to understand, is why are these five the top five? If any of them are eligible to be up there, I want to understand how they got to those top five. And that's what I think is important for us. And that's where I guess we know more than the citizens do, or we should know more than the citizens do, about where the other work is in our community and where else we can align this work. So we're not, you know, if we're already mobilizing in one specific area, and it's, you know, it doesn't require a huge concept design, and it's going to cost a quarter million versus four and a half million, and it's going to take two years, then we should be doing that. I mean, we should be going after the projects that are going to get successes. I mean, this is T-SLOSS money, and people want to see these projects, and we've got another SLOSS coming up next year, and if we don't start showing some of these projects are getting done, people aren't going to be supportive of that either.
I guess I want to ask the group a question, sort of thinking about the conversation as it unfolds tonight. And I'm thinking about another set of work that we're doing right now, which is getting together our list for the 2020 SLOSS. And one of the things that staff was able to provide us, as we looked at all of the staff submissions, is some narrative description of all of the rationales for new fire equipment or police cruisers, or, you know, new government facility. Would it benefit us to have a narrative description of why each of these items in number nine and 10 showed up in nine and 10? Would that be the kind of thing that y'all are interested in?
That would help me be able to understand. I got the criteria of what is establishing what tier it's in, and so even whether it's the score of what made those five come up, and narrative. But that's what I was looking for, to move this forward, but not on those specific projects until we can understand and be able to explain. And the narrative would be the start, as well as a score.
Do other folks feel like that's the kind of thing that would be beneficial, I'm seeing here or not?
I guess I'm... Go ahead, Jared.
Jared, you trying to call a question again?
No, 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 I'm not going to call a question again. I'm just going to make a statement. You know, we can prioritize these things after the fact as the elected officials, and we should be careful to do things in the right order. But I think that if we go back to scratch and start prioritizing these things, you're throwing out all the hard work that our Citizens Committee did and the consultants, that we paid a lot of money to work on this, you're just throwing that out, and, you know, I think there's value to the work that's already been done. Doesn't mean we can't have some more input as the elected officials that oversee the government and the budget, and we should have that, but I don't think we should just throw it out and start re-prioritizing them, because we don't understand exactly how they did the work that they spent months on working to put this together. They did it with very thoughtful guidelines and with the help of experts. So I think they did a very good job, and if we feel like we need to adjust some things, tweak them later, we have the authority to do that. Don't think we need to go back to square one, it's going to delay the whole process. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I just want to say, I think a work session's in order, definitely.
I absolutely do.
I will say, on page 64, on table 46, there is the justification for these five. I think it gives you some insight into why they thought... Why the Citizens Committee thought that they might recommend the advancement of these. But certainly, we're glad to give y'all all the information and explanation that we can, so that you're comfortable with your decisions.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Andy, you had something more?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, I agree with Commissioner Bailey in the following sense, that there's a lot of hard work that's gone into this, and I certainly don't think we should be throwing it out, and I don't think that's what we're doing. I think what we're... I think, and I agree with him, that, you know, at the end of the day, the ultimate authority is always the elected officials. My understanding of this report here, though, is, and maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but if we go ahead and vote yes on the report as it is, we are now saying that these five projects under item number nine, and these 10, these five under item number 10, are the ones out of Tier One that we want to direct our staff to go and work on right now. And they may well be, but there are other Tier One projects that, for whatever different... For whatever reason, that may make more sense to work on. And that's where I think what Commissioner Gertz, I think, or somebody was saying, I think that's why it's, you know, let's accept the report, so we're not saying we're not interested, let's accept the report, but let's have a work session.
Well, that's what just got voted down, to just do 1A. I'm going to offer something right quick, and maybe y'all don't want to do it, that we divide this question. We vote on 1A, and then we vote on 1B. But that would have to mean somebody's got to withdraw their motion, if y'all are interested in doing that.
I think if we can have an understanding with the manager, that we'll have a work session before we proceed with any of these concepts, if that's what I heard you say that we would do, then I'm okay with going ahead and voting 1A and 1B.
And that's the motion that's on the floor, that we adopt 1A and B?
Yes.
With that understanding?
With that understanding?
Yes, that's my understanding at this time.
Okay, I'm going to call a question. Ms. Bradlin, will you call the roll for us and do a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, but that's...
No, that's been... So we're just back to the original motion. 1A and B.
With... Is it reasonable to say with concept development to follow a work session?
Very good.
So moved. Okay, roll call.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Kind of votes I like to hear.
All right, here we go.
Okay, now, I think there's a lot of people here interested in item number 22, and that's in Mr. Herrad's district, so I'm going to call on you, Andy, to start the discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as everybody knows, this is about the reconfiguration of Barnet Shoals Road, and everybody behind the rail is aware of why this has come up now, but for those that may be watching at home, and maybe some in the audience that are not as familiar. So we do have a policy of examining whether current lane configurations on roads make sense whenever we come to resurface them. And so it has come time to resurface the Barnet Shoals Road, at least between College Station Road and Whitehall. And so this is why the question has come up now. And so one of the things that we wanted to do, and I was supportive of this, because I think we make better decisions when we have more information than when we have less information, so we decided to do the demonstration project. So we decided to do the demonstration project. And now we have to decide whether we're going to make that permanent or not. And so in doing the demonstration project, we collected a lot of data. We have quantitative data, and we also did a survey where we have a lot of qualitative data. And in fact, on the survey, we had 900 and some responses, which I certainly might, if it's not the number one, it's certainly the number two. I can't remember whether we had more feedback on Lexington Road or not, I can't remember now. So we've had a lot of feedback. And I certainly agree with one of the speakers who said that we need to engage in data-driven decision-making. And as I said, part of the data are quantitative and part of the data are qualitative data. So the quantitative data show us several things about the intersection. They show us that the car count, at least according to our staff, is an average of 17,785 vehicles going through that intersection. That's a little bit of a decline over the pre-change amount of 17,880, although I think it's also important to bear in mind that that figure itself comes from, I think it's September of 2017. So that figure comes from a little bit before, about a year or so before the project was initiated. So, but, you know, I'm assuming that's fairly accurate. We also know from the data that there were an average of 16 bicycles per day that moved through the intersection during the project. We do not know the pre-project bicycle count. We know it wasn't zero, but we don't know how many additional bicycles may have gone through that intersection using the lanes. It's going to be a number above, before it was a number above zero. So 16, the average is 16. That may be several more bicycles per day going through the intersection during the demonstration project. It may not, we don't know. It may actually be fewer, although probably not. So we don't know that. We do know that at the first public meeting, which was held on August the 8th, when this was discussed, the responses, we had a 53% in support of the demonstration project. After the demonstration project went into effect, of the over 900 comments that were received in the survey, about 74% were negative. So the more that people became familiar with the demonstration project, at least based on these data, it seemed to be the less happy, pretty much, many people were. I read through the comments, there's a lot of comments in the survey. I think, you know, some of those comments were from people who just don't like bike lanes, and I think some were from people who want bike lanes regardless. To me, the most useful comments were the comments that said, "We want better bicycle connectivity," from cyclists, "We want better bicycle connectivity, but this is not the way to do it." So I see my time is out. Can I extend my time a little bit?
Please do.
Okay. We also know that from our own staff report, that this particular intersection is currently at a Level Service B, and in about 10 years, if this project goes through, it will reduce to a Level C. Now, that's not a huge difference, but it is a difference. And we also know that the Kroger redevelopment is coming along. We know that the analysis looked at traffic of all kinds moving through the intersection. What we, that's the quantitative data. What the qualitative data is telling us, in terms of the surveys, though, are some things that are not being picked up in the quantitative data. And that is that for some of the neighborhoods out there, it's harder to turn out of and into the neighborhoods. We know that coming from the Wit Davis side of Barnett Shoals Road, going through the corner opposite where the Old Jodlem Down BBQ used to be, that has now become, in my opinion, more difficult to negotiate because the merge lane coming from Barnett Shoals, as you go around that corner to head towards College Station Road, you now have to merge, you don't have two lanes, you now have a merge lane. And there's a lot of fast traffic coming from the Watkinsville area through that intersection. And I almost got sideswiped there the other day myself. And we do know also that there are some impacts on the firehouse. And we also know that because this is not really a slam dunk either way, that for the first time, at least since I've been on the commission, that's since 2007, we have a staff report where the staff is not making a recommendation one way or the other, they're basically saying, "Figure it out yourself." So, which is fine, that's what we get paid the big bucks for. So what Commissioner Dickerson and I are trying to do is to try and find a solution that makes as many people happy as possible, or at least makes as few people unhappy as possible. And so we're using the study that we've just looked at. There is a proposal in this study to look at this segment of Barnett Shoals Road and to develop a separated bicycle facility, not on the road, because the cost is estimated between $1 and $5 million. And what we're trying to do is to basically adopt that as the strategy that will be acceptable to vehicular traffic, but also acceptable and more safe for cyclists by physically separating them from the road surface. So the money figure simply comes from this study. We have no idea whether that's an accurate account of the amount of money that it will or will not take, and that's one of the things that I'd like, if we could get some better definition from our staff on. So that's what we know. So that's, I'm open to hearing my colleagues discuss.
And I'm going to call Ms. Dickerson, because y'all's districts are right there together, merging at that area. And then I think Mr. Hamby and whoever else wants to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and make a motion that the commission defined option, that the mayor and commission approve repaving at the section of Barnett Shoals between Forest Road and Whitehall Road and return the lane configuration to its present pre-demonstration state, to direct the manager's office to come up with a plan to develop a multi-use path configuration for pedestrians and cyclists that would connect College Station Road to Whitehall. The funding required would come from one or a combination of the following, either a reallocation of, and again, this dollar amount is what we're at from the bike ped master plan, so all we've got, roughly $1,096,733 from the presently available SPOSS 2011, Project Six Bicycle Improvement Program, or a reallocation of approximately $1,096,733 from projects identified for funding using T-SPOSS funds in Tier One of the bike ped master plan, or some other source to be identified by the manager's office. Design of the multi-use plan and plans for installation to begin no later than January 1, 2019. And that would be concept to design.
And I'll second that.
And then I'd like to make some comments, if I could.
We have a motion, second, go ahead and make your comments, Ms. Dickerson.
So, I mean, and I worked for the county for 14 years ago, and I never had this kind of, I mean, now we've had more than 1,000 people respond. Our inboxes have been full. The online survey that was created by staff was people participated in it, so we've got interest in participating in it. I think, a couple of things that Commissioner Harrod said that I think are important to also point out is, we know from staff current traffic. We've got an estimate for what the future traffic will look like along that corridor. And there's really, there's not a destination on that corridor. The destination is on the other end of these, okay? We're going through that to get places. There may be some destinations in direction, you know, going in neighborhoods, but there's not like a specific place that people are going to hang out or whatever. So the concern is, is that the Whitehall Roundabout is about to get, is right on the verge of being constructed. And people, we only have, a friend of mine said this the other day, we only have like three escape routes from the east side. You got Whitehall Road from Barnett Shoals, you got Cedar Shoals to Barnett Shoals, or Whitehall to College Station, and Lexington Road. I mean, that's it. And we're about to dump all the traffic that's currently going to Whitehall onto College Station. So that's going to change for sure. Not to mention what Commissioner Harrod said about super Kroger, and we anticipate we're starting to see some things happening there. So that's going to continue to be an issue, and that's going to dump more traffic, and it's going to be more of a safety concern for cars and bikers on that road. The fire trucks, the SUVs, the school buses that are trying to make that turn right there from, coming from College Station on Barnett Shoals, that's a problem. If we approve this permanent lane configuration, that's got to be figured out. I mean, we may have to cut into the road, I mean, there's a big tree right there. There's a lot of stuff that's going to have to be done to make that a workable road. The emergency vehicle issue, that was brought up, I was actually at a neighborhood meeting this past week at Idlewood, and those neighbors are concerned. They are out quite a ways. And I haven't asked, you know, what the emergency response is going to be when we've got three lanes of traffic, you know, people in the center lane and people on the other side, and no way for our vehicles to get down quickly. The, you know, the public input, I think, is valuable, as Commissioner Harrod said, there's a huge shift between what everybody thought they wanted until we put it in place. And when we put it in place, like, nah, 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 not that. And that's what we've heard. And I'm trying to call out the people who are on the far ends, you know, either they're bike haters, as people want to call them, or they're bike lovers. But there's people in the middle who basically say, you know, I don't have a problem with bikes, that's great, but let's do it right. Let's do it right the first time. In fact, I had, I've got one, I had one person send one this afternoon, I think I sent it to y'all, because we've been getting them all along, but the woman said, and I won't mention her name, so I didn't ask her, but I'm a cyclist, and while I love the idea of more bike lanes, these bike lanes were not done correctly, and I do not support them. I've seen two other people, I have seen two people ever use them, and I would not actually use these lanes. They're on the wrong side of the road to connect to the Firefly Trail. My husband is a police officer, one who investigates traffic crashes, and he's aghast at how unsafe these lanes are, mostly at the intersection of College Station. And we just got some information tonight about crash data and about vehicle usage of that road that I think we, you know, we need to talk about some. I had people report, I had one lady call me and said that a little old lady was driving, was observed driving, who turned out of Greencrest into the bike lane and drove all the way down to the intersection. Delivery vehicles are stopping to park in the bike lane, then they're cutting back into the driving lane. As Commissioner Harrod said, there's a short merge if you're coming from Barnett Shoals. That road has been, for the longest time, said, "Keep moving." Now people are having to stop and, wait a minute, now don't keep moving, because all of a sudden, there's no lane for them, they have to merge over. And so that's creating some issues. And today, I actually witnessed on the way back home, before I came to this meeting at Pine Crest, there used to be a small little area where people could come out of Pine Crest and turn, going towards College Station, and sit, and then merge into traffic, and that lane is no longer there. So this person literally turned, pulled into what is essentially the turn lane to go into Pine Crest in order to get out today. And I've heard, you know, UPS is, the concern is that once the panels go up, that the drivers, the delivery trucks and stuff will not be able to access that, you know, access that lane to park or whatnot. So that's a concern. The, a couple other comments I wanted to make real quick, I know I'm running out of The thing that I guess I look at is that we have a plan that recommended, you know, we have a plan, professionals and citizens who do this for, you know, who do this as a living, who came up with a plan that suggested a separated facility. And of course, a separated off-road facility is much more protected than an on-road, baller protected, panel protected road. And of course, this, you know, this wouldn't be an issue if we didn't have to, you know, if this timing of this didn't come forward. Because if we weren't resurfacing, there wouldn't be a question at all, we'd be doing a separated facility at some point in the future. And I get the whole thing about saving money. Listen, I'm all about it, we just had a conversation about not spending money unnecessarily. But I think, you know, we're not fighting against bike lanes, I think what we're fighting for is a bike lane done the right way. And we see now, in the top five list, we have Cedar Shoals Drive, which has a delineated facility, has bike lanes. And from what I understand, because of the speed on the road, although we haven't addressed the speed on the road as an issue that may be hindering people from participating or riding their bikes, we've got bike lanes, but we're looking at now improving them. And my concern is, if we do this on this road, this way, putting a square peg in a round hole, we're going to be right back at it in five or six years, and another commission's going to be saying, "Let's fix it, because it's not right." The bike ped master plan says you should design, the design should satisfy community desire. It should satisfy community desire. It should suit the existing context and provide the highest degree of safety for the users. We know there's a better option. The overarching goal for bike and pedestrian is getting more people out walking and biking. And I, you know, we've got people telling us that they don't feel safe on that road. I think the interesting thing that came up tonight that I didn't even think about, and a biker brought it up, was that we're not talking about extending this two-way cycle track, we're saying it's just going to be this little three-tenths of a mile area, we're not talking about continuing it down Barnett Shoals or Whitehall. So it's kind of anomaly, it's kind of weird that we're just doing it there. I mean, either we continue it that way, or we find some other way and continue that. How, I mean, you're going to jump into, you know, you're going to go from a single lane on one side to a double, and then maybe to another single or to nothing. It seems like there should be some continuity in that. In the bike ped master plan, they talk about Vision Zero. Vision Zero goal is to provide safe approach to bike ped to eliminate opportunity for crashes or collisions with vehicles. Systematic approach to build a safe system from the start. From the start, that's all we're asking for, is let's do it the right way. I, you know, the only other thing I guess I'll say at this point is, when we look at the users, and I talked to a friend of mine whose husband bikes, he's more of a, I don't know if you call it a road, a biker, he doesn't bike to work, he bikes for enjoyment, sort of similar to some of the people that got up and talked today. And that's according to the plan, and I'm reading what was in the plan, you've got about 51% of the riders in the United States that are what they call interested but concerned. That is, they want to ride, but they're concerned about their surroundings. And the network, according to bike ped master plan, the network should be planned to address that, those users. But the Barnett Shoals Road segment is considered a Level of Comfort Four. Five is being intolerable for even the most experienced cyclist. So four is at the very high end, and people have already said that they don't necessarily feel comfortable with that configuration. And so 51% of the, we're not pulling in people who are going to use that. And I'm concerned that we end up with another Cedar Shoals where we have bike lanes that nobody's using. And that's silly. I mean, we need to find the best use of our money and get people out and get people to use it. That's the point, that's the goal. So I guess my question would be, why would we want to put ourselves in a position to put in place lanes, bike lanes, that later on, we're going to have to come back and address? That's all.
Okay, Ms. Hamby, you want to...
Sure.
Come in. I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. And at the risk of Commissioner Harrod and...
And I'm going to keep you to your five minutes.
Oh, no, that's fine, I won't go on like this. At the risk of having Commissioner Harrod and Commissioner Dickerson come across the table and strangle me, I'm going to make a substitute motion, if I could, and others may want to strangle me as well, that we put this on hold for 30 days. And the reason why I'm asking that we put it on hold for 30 days is simply because when we did the, when we started this study, I thought it'd be a full month of the study and getting, collecting data that way. But we heard tonight that it hasn't, I heard also in a conversation on Saturday at the farmer's market, that that wasn't the case either. So I think it'd really be helpful if we get a good full impact study on that. But I also think it would be helpful for us to get, to give Commissioner Dickerson and Harrod a bit more time to work with staff on what those, what those cost estimates would be for your commission-to-find option alternative, because I'd certainly be interested in that. I know that's created some concern behind the rail about supporting the commission-to-find option, is how much, at the end of the day, would that cost? And I understand why you put that figure in there, but maybe if we can nail down a little bit, a little bit deeper, to get some accurate cost estimates for that, that would help in that.
Mike, I want to interrupt you just a second. Before you make your motion, hold on your motion, and I'll say something, and then I'll come back to you.
Okay. Okay. And addressing some other concerns, so I'll hold off for a minute.
Yeah, and I'll come back to you, and we'll start the clock over again for you if we need to.
No, I don't need to.
But I do want to let you know, since you were talking about a 30-day hold on it, I talked with the manager yesterday, early this morning, time just sort of merges when we need to commission me weeks, is there is a problem for a hold on that because of that window of opportunity for paving?
Well, I was going to ask him about that, and it's my understanding that they would be able to wait 30 days.
So we probably, two things. One is the weather, and one is remobilization cost. The contractors agreed to hold their price for 30 days and not charge us extra to come back. But we really probably don't want to wait beyond agenda setting because of... But we really probably don't want to wait beyond agenda setting, because if you're really getting into risking it with the weather, you know, getting the work done.
Well, how much are the remobilization costs? Because I was out there today-
Weather's the biggest issue.
Well, I was out there today. I didn't see anything mobilized, ready to go. I'll put it that way. So they're remobilizing regardless.
No, if they, if they finish the paving program and leave town, because they're paving all over, and we're getting towards the end of the paving season.
Well, I understand that. But I think also we're making a decision that we've had 1,000 people-
I'm not arguing with you.
No, I know you're not. But I think we've made it, we've got a decision that more people have ever commented on anything than, than since I've been on the commission. So I think that needs to be factored into, into whether or not we rush this on through, or whether or not we, we make sure that, that their considerations are heard and read. I mean, certainly reading through a lot of this, but also making sure that we do some due diligence on the commission-to-find option, but also some due diligence on the study that we've gotten out there. I mean, that study, you know, like I said, it's only been a few days worth of work, and it may, you know, there may be some folks who are so dead set against it, may, may change their mind after seeing it for a little bit. So I'm, I'm willing to risk the, the paving schedule at the, for the opportunity to, to make sure we, we do our due diligence on this. I make a, I make a motion to, a substitute motion to, to hold for 30 days.
I'd like to second that, please, ma'am.
We have a motion as second. Melissa.
All right. Yeah, so-
I'm sorry. I'll get you, go ahead, Melissa. I'll get you next. I'm sorry, Allison.
From what I understand, the paving schedule is based on the ideal temperature, the weather in the fall and the spring. So there's a round of paving that takes place in the spring, early summer. Is that correct?
Well, we've been paving since the spring.
Okay, but-
The heat, I mean, the asphalt's hot, so the, the heat isn't the controlling factor. It's just rain and cold.
Okay. So would there be any possibility to put this, give this like a good six-month run? I mean, 12 days is, I mean, 12 days is ridiculous, and, you know, even, even another 10 or 14 days, you know, I mean, people, it takes a while for people to get used to stuff. I mean, it seems like we're on fast track because we want, the paving's scheduled. But if the paving could be put off, we could get a lot more data. I mean, I'm interested in crash data, quite frankly. I mean, when I see those speeds on that road, 48 miles an hour, and we've, you know, thankfully it's come down five miles, but 42 is still a lot for what is essentially a residential corridor. And, you know, I think the number one priority out there should be to get those speeds down. And they're not going to go down if you have a four-lane road. I mean, if any, you know, I was out there this morning, I dragged my husband out there and had him drive it. And he's like, yeah, I'm definitely going slower on this three-lane road. You know, and, and the, the wait times are minimal. I mean, 15 seconds seems to be worth it. I just feel like there's a lot more data that needs to be collected, and even 30 days is not enough time to collect it.
Ms. Roth.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I'm supportive of the motion that's on the floor, that Mike Hamby's going to get beat up at the tour. I guess I'll get behind you on that. But a question that came up, one, I agree that the 12-day, and I thought we voted, actually, for a 30-day trial. So I kind of feel like we, there's a point of order that we need to at least get a 30-day in there. So that helps me with that. So to overlap on what we just accepted in the Bike Ped Master Plan, so this section, if I understand, has a tier-two area. So in the future, the tier-two concept thing would kick in. By striping it the way it is now, and if we approve what it is now, does that change it being in its two, tier-two status and coming forward in 10 years, whenever it comes? Or does it stay with its ranking? That'll help. That's the kind of question that's already come to me, which you can see why I needed help with that with the master plan.
Well, sure. Well, you know, this is just part of, the paving has prompted this, not the Bike Master Plan, the Bike Ped Master Plan. And, you know, and just going on the mayor and commission policy, staff evaluated it, and here we are. So it is, it's one way of accomplishing bicycle facilities there through our paving program.
Right. Well, let me, let me get my question, that by improving it now does not take it off the list as the, it's tier-two thing?
That's right.
That's what I'm getting at. It, it doesn't make it go away. And as far as people talking about the future and, and the traffic changes, this, this concept that we're trying to, that we're working on right now doesn't take away what its ranking when it comes through?
It wouldn't get physically removed out of the plan, but it may, you know, if there are bicycle facilities there, you know, you may or may not consider it in the future when you, when the mayor and commission figures out what, which products they want to work on.
Okay. I think that covers it. But I did hear a lot of people who spoke tonight on this, they talk about confusion, uncertainty, taking time to understand it, and cyclists having to look up how to behave in the two, the protected two-way bike lane. So I think that that's another reason why more time is needed. A lot of people I read had not seen any green paths before, green boxes. So we're, there's the educational component that can come with more time for the motion on the floor.
Ms. Gerst.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without, at this point, diving kind of more deeply into, you know, the set of data, you know, which I appreciate both the public and staff kind of having brought to us. Just to kind of focus on the nuts and bolts around the commission-to-find option. Blaine is, when in the springtime would we have our next cluster of paving?
It's usually in mid-May, late May.
Okay. All right. And so the, the cluster underway right now, of which this would be a part, and of course, we've seen some other roadways recently repaved, including the segment of Barnett Shoals Road from Lexington Highway there, by the movie theater, up toward the shopping center in Georgetown area. If this didn't get repaved right now and was moved to the spring, would we have to modify the existing contract with the contractor that we've mobilized now? Would we have to give them a comparable amount of lot, lane miles based on the nature of this contract?
Well, I, I'm not intensely familiar with the contract, but I would think that this was just be a deductive, I mean, we've given them an estimate of what we're going to pave, and they have done a lot of paving, as hopefully our citizens have noticed. I don't think that this is going to contractually penalize us if they do or don't do.
So if this three-tenths of a mile got paved in May rather than in November, that would, it would essentially be kind of a no-net loss in terms of public expenditure?
That's my understanding. But I'm just taking you a step further. I guess we would need to know from y'all which way to have it configured until it gets repaid in the spring. And if it goes back the other way, then there'd be some, some costs, like the paint that went down, taking the paint up and putting the paint back.
And I would think that we'd have to make that decision if we were going to move this 30 days down the road. I anticipate the same.
That's, that's, that's my intent of the motion, to hold it, is to make sure that we make a decision 30 days from now.
But hold it and continue the test for, for 30 more days?
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, so in light of the obvious concern from the constituents, we started this test on September 13th. So 30 days would not be 30 days from now, it would be 30 days from that, from that point. Are we still collecting data on the traffic counts and stuff on those tubes, both bike and the vehicle data?
I think that that ran through the-
Twenty-fifth?
The twenty-fifth. But, you know, we can get that.
Well, I, what I, so what I would recommend, of course, you know, I guess we'd have to have a special call session, and I don't, you know, how we do, would do all that. But I, I don't see, I mean, today's October 2nd. We've got five weeks in October. That puts it at November 6th, which is well outside, outside that 30-day period that the contractor has. So, you know, what, what would it, what does it cost, what does it cost us to delay it 30 days and get outside their mobilization? You know, what, what's the penalty essentially if we want to say, we'll come back on the 7th? And, you know, what do they do?
It's, it's about $7,000. Now, the weather is what the issue is.
Right. Well, it's 90 degrees Thursday, I think, they said. So I don't know that we're going to have a huge problem with that necessarily.
Well, traditionally, you know, first frost is around mid-October. So, you know, it's going to take some time to do the work. I'm not pressuring y'all to make a decision. I'm just saying, you know, we could push into the spring. We're already kind of corking with the weather right now.
Well, let me ask, let me ask one more question real quick, Mike, if you can. But 7,000 to, to pay the difference, to bring them back, is a lot cheaper than 20-something thousand to re-stripe the road back until we get to the spring, which is what, I can't imagine that we could let, make this continue for six more months or whatever. So I'd be all for just 30 days and paying the 7,000, whatever it is, to get them back after that. That's what I'm saying. I just want to, I want to understand what it's going to cost us, both in resources and also in time. And so I, I, did somebody second your motion? Did we get a second?
It's been motioned, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I want to go back and get an understanding, because Commissioner Williams had, had suggested that we try to deal with it at the agenda-setting meeting. So, and I know Sharon's talking about pushing it to 30 days from the original date. So can we, can we make those days where we can actually make this vote at our agenda-setting meeting?
I think I would just feel more comfortable making it at our regular voting session when the public knows to, to come and comment on it. And I think, you know, we'll know 30 days from here, from this date, about, about whether or not it'll stay in the same configuration up until when they can repave it or not. I mean, either way, you can send it, send it back. So let's, let's make a decision in 30 days about where, how, how this is moving forward. Give us time to answer all these questions and whatnot, so.
Are you asking a question? Because I'll be happy to.
No, ma'am. I'm asking to make a comment.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. I actually don't think that, that Mike's recommendation or request is such a bad one. But I'm not going to be at the next meeting. And this is an important issue, and I'm going to be out of the country. And I just really do not like the idea that I'm going to miss an opportunity to vote for my constituents on this issue. So if there's, I don't expect anybody to bend over backwards from my schedule, but I'm not going to be able to be here at our next voting meeting. And I, that's why I'm not happy to vote for what Mike is suggesting, although I don't think it's a bad idea.
Anybody else want to be heard? Ms. Bearman?
I just want to, I guess, ask a question in that statement, too. If you're talking about moving the pavement into the next year, into next spring, that will be part of a new contract process. This contract expires, it has an end date on it, and so you can't use the same contractor to come back in the spring to do this work. You're going, there will be a new process next year, next calendar year, for a new contractor. I just want to make that clear.
The other thing I'd like to do, if we could clarify the motion to not say 30 days, because that's literal, let's just say the November voting meeting.
That's fine.
Okay. Just going to, I'm going to ask just for, that we be clear, that what we're asking for also includes amending, amending your thing to require staff to do a vehicle and bike, bike count immedi, I mean, starting that immediately, so we can get that data back again, that data coming in, and also a survey. And I would, I would ask that we get a little bit more definitive on the survey, because I did ask, I did have a question posed to staff that didn't get asked, and had we done that, we might have had more clarity on what the public wanted as far as a facility or not. We got, yes, I like the, I like bike lanes, but I don't like this. We didn't get, would you like bike lanes on either side? Would you prefer a separated facility? You know, we didn't get that answered, and I think that's important, to give us more information.
Commissioner Dickerson, I think for now, I would just like to hold it to get, to get some more of that data. I know that the public has been weighing in on us, and, and I'd hate to, I mean, if it's, if it's up to the, to the rest of the commission, I'm not going to follow my sword on it. But, but I just, I just think having the extra 30 days allows us to get, get, get to the bottom of where we're trying to go.
Mr. Harrod, you want to say something?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I mean, I, I think it is important to bear in mind that the reason that this is coming up has nothing to do, really, with this report. It has to do with our paving schedule. And I agree with what, what Commissioner Dickerson said. I don't see the point in, in putting a facility out there that only the most experienced cyclists are going to know how to use. And I understand that there's some education that needs to, I, I get that. But we have a turnover in this town every August with, I don't know, 6,000 new students, whoever it is, coming to town. So I, I think that at the end of the day, we need to be designing infrastructure that really works. So I'm not necessarily opposed to Commissioner Hamby's motion, because I can count votes as well as the next person can. But I would hate, I would hate to see the East Side shortchanged with a project that's, that's cheap, but isn't necessarily going to bring out the average cyclist. I mean, I think that people who are really good cyclists, and that does not include myself, will have no problem with the way it's set up here. But I'm not sure that that's necessarily the, I'm not sure that's not, that's necessarily what we're trying to do with increasing the availability of bike lanes or, or other forms of infrastructure to encourage more people to bicycle.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. So are y'all ready to vote, or anybody else down?
Well, now I'm getting confused about being able to pave it. And what, what kind of striping's going to be there while, if we can't stripe it?
I made that decision.
The motion, the motion to make that decision, or the, will be at the November meeting. So if, regardless if it can get paved or not until the spring, or, or not, one way or the other, we'll find out how it's, if it's going to stay that way until it gets repaved or not. Yeah.
In 30 days.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, would you call the roll, Mr. Bratman?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
No.
Okay, so, so we will be voting on the final decision on this at our November meeting.
Madam Mayor, can I just ask a quick question? I have a calendar in front of me. What is the date of the next voting session?
November 6th.
It seems like it says 6th.
It says 6th. I'll still be out of the country.
That's election day.
Okay. Okay, we, we are going to go back. Does any, does anybody need a break badly?
Yeah, it is time for that.
I, I thought I, I saw some anxious faces around. Let's, let's be back in no more than 10 minutes.
My, I have a girlfriend that's-
Did I understand? Did I understand?
... opportunity to get some clarity about an aspect of the resolution on item number four, particularly whereas it is the goal of the applicant that minority business enterprises, disadvantaged business enterprise and women's business enterprise be utilized to the full assistance possible in connection with this slash these projects, and that definite procedure shall be established and administered to ensure that minority businesses shall have the maximum feasible opportunity to compete for contracts and purchase orders when procuring construction contracts, supplies, equipment contracts, or consulting other services. So I just wanted to have a moment for perhaps a little bit of public education about what processes we currently have in place, as well as measures of accountability, to see that we make good faith in those processes to ensure that this aspect of the resolution is met.
Well, I don't have the information here with me. I can follow up with you on that. I do know this is something that we have been working on, though, and I know that, as a matter of fact, within Vision Athens, we've been planning a, an event in the spring where we're partnering with the Northeast Georgia Business Alliance, the Small Business Development Center, to sort of have a forum on contracting to try to work to have our pools of contractors bidding on things to be more diverse.
Okay. I'm happy to support staff recommendations for this project, and I move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Mr. Hamby, did you want?
I did, and I ran across an article in the Savannah newspaper, I think it's Savannah newspaper, and I did share this with Commissioner Parker. And Savannah, now, they have Savannah's Office of Business Opportunity, and it's reaching out to many local companies that might normally get overlooked, and the city's disadvantaged business enterprise program targets certain owners of Savannah companies and encourages them to do business with the city. Now, for this long, it may be something for us to look into to see what may be possible here. So there are strict guidelines for small, local companies to land a contract, but they have specific things that look at disadvantaged business enterprises. That's all I have to say.
We have a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to item number 13, which is the project to purchase additional vehicles for gang investigator position and transport needs at the jail. Have an ordinance, Mr. Bearman.
An ordinance to amend the FY 2019 annual operating and capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding for the purchase of two additional vehicles for the sheriff's office and for other purposes.
Mr. Hamby.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, but I also want to make a comment, and the comment is, you know, I know we have a SPOLOST program that's coming up before us about fleet replacement, and there's a specific one in there about police officers and being able to take cars, well, it's not take har, it's not a take har home program, but I think, you know, I think we ought to be, and I know I was very vocal about not allowing in county or out of county police officers to take cars home, but I guess I can say now, you know, people can change their mind about some things, and it might be worth a discussion for us to have as we talk about that SPOLOST program, or as we talk about other needs of the police department as we move forward. I'll make a motion to approve whatever number this is, number 13.
13. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Mr. Parker?
I still have questions about demonstration of need for the gang investigator vehicle in particular. Thinking back to the ACPYD study that was published in 2017, there were a lot of community perceptions that we had a gang problem, but not very clear data, in my opinion, that suggested that additional police presence or funding for patrolling facilities or equipment would help that. Rather, I heard a lot of concerns from the community regarding the need for youth development programs and economic development opportunities that would help people get away from crime in the first place and help prevent them from getting involved in gangs in the first place. And I just would like to ask, I know that the Public Safety Initiative funds are earmarked specifically for the ACCPD, but I'm wondering if there's any other way that we could shift that so that we can start using Public Safety Funds for initiatives that help prevent crime in the first place, rather than police or criminalize folks that are perceived to be involved in gang activity, though I imagine this will probably pass nonetheless. Just wanted to ask that question of Manager Williams.
Well, that would be, you know, something the mayor and commission would decide in the budget process.
Okay.
Of course, you know, we can have that conversation about effective strategies that we can look at. And just one clarification, this is for the sheriff's office, not the police department.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for clearing that for me, too. So I'm sorry, I was thinking police department, but my statement still stands about the police department.
Yeah, so this is for the sheriff's office vehicles for medical transport. I mean, I'm just kind of reluctant to make budget amendments for a department that's currently under audit. You know, I'd like to kind of see that audit report before we start making any budget amendments, which I think we'll be seeing that in the next month or so. I'm weak, I'm weak.
Mr. Hamby, Emmett Harrod.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, without talking about the merits or not of this particular issue, I think it's important to understand what the audit process is and what it is not. And it's not a financial audit of the sheriff's office, it's basically an operational audit. And I think this is the second, if maybe not the third, that the sheriff's office has agreed to do. And I think it's important also to understand that the sheriff is a constitutional officer, he does not have to engage with our internal auditor if he does not want to. And so I think the fact that he has chosen to do so speaks highly of the sheriff.
I'd also like to, I'd also like to point out that, at least for the purposes of the medical transport, I mean, that's something that's clearly out of his control. I did meet with him this week to talk to him about it. They, you know, we've got a lot of mental health consumers that are in the jail, and we are required by law to take care of them. And if he can't do it onsite, he's got to get them somewhere, and you've got to have a vehicle to do it. So, I mean, I think, I think we're, you know, it would behoove us to move forward with this request.
Mr. Gertz, do you want?
Really, just to kind of make those same notes.
Okay, have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, we, yeah, we have one abstention, Jean.
Number 14.
Yeah, I was just thinking about something, and that has to do with abstentions, does a commissioner need to state why they're abstaining?
No.
I just, it's just, it hasn't come up before, so, or it's been a while since it has. Okay, we're on item number 14 now, which is another grant, it's the Burn Justice Grant. And we have an ordinance, Mr. Bearman.
An ordinance to amend the FY 2019 annual operating and capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding, if awarded, from the Federal Justice Assistance Grant Program for tactical supplies and for other purposes.
I make a motion that we approve option one, A, B, C, D.
Second.
Do you want to say something, Marah?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd still like a little bit more clarity about how they were able to submit the grant, which requiring approval of the commission and mayor to do so, but they're requesting our permission to approve submission after the fact.
Well, that happens, that happens more often than not. A lot of times with the federal government, it's a hurry-up-and-wait situation where we don't get grant notice in time to really work it through the system. Because, you know, it could be anywhere from 30 to 60 days, depending on when that happens. So it's, and it's always done this way, where if y'all don't authorize it, then we will just call them and retract it.
Is this a grant that they apply for yearly?
Yes.
So we know every year that we're going to have the opportunity to apply for this grant?
That's right.
But the window is too short for us to have larger notice than 30 days?
Typically, we do have, when the call went out in the history, I see that's not in there. I'm assuming that's the case, because that's often the case.
Okay. I just personally would love to see a little more public oversight. I think that some of the things that are being requested in the budget, I personally would love to know, have more information about, for example, the $4,500 requested for community outreach trailer improvements, which to me, I don't see any demonstrated need for, other than what's narratively provided here. And so I would like to second approval of, or I would like to support staff recommendations for this agenda item, but with the stipulation that in future, we have some sort of work session, so we can talk through the budget recommendations before they submit the grant.
Well, and I, so, y'all have to help me understand that, too, because I don't want to be seen as non-responsive. But if that's, if y'all want to have work sessions on grant applications, we can certainly do that. But it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be, there's a lot that we do that with.
Well, I'm just upset specifying in this particular instance.
Okay.
Yeah, Marah just, and we can talk about this outside the meeting, but if we, we don't have every item that we vote on in a work session, you know, just things that we need to have specific technical information mostly.
Yeah, and that's what I would like to have.
Yeah, and, but everything has technical, I mean, I just don't think it's possible to have every item we vote on in a work session.
I would agree, but in this particular instance, when we're talking about approving budgeting for enhanced search and rescue equipment, interactive radio, understanding like what these things are and how they're contributing to the public safety of our community, I think that's an important thing for us to be briefed on.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. I'm not sure, I'm not sure there's not an easier way to do it, but this is probably not the right avenue to find it. Yes, ma'am?
I mean, this might be where a criminal justice coordinating committee might come in handy, and remember, that was one of the recommendations of that task force from like, I don't know what, seven, eight, nine years ago. You know, I feel like having citizen committees that can kind of work with these departments more closely to kind of vet and guide some of these decisions that would make us feel better about voting for them. I'm all for these citizen committees that are specifically looking at, you know, one particular area, and are well-educated in one particular area, and have kind of the interests and the knowledge of the greater community. That's, I know we've brought it up before in support of that committee, so I hope that we can get a committee like that established.
Mr. Gertz.
Just making note that in a lot of these equipment-heavy departments, whether we're talking about transit, or police department, or leisure services, you know, I've noted that there often is this short timeframe, too, and what's been good, in my experience in this government, is that usually if I've gone through the manager and just asked, can I sit down with the department head, or in this case, somebody in the police department, and kind of talk through kind of how these items will be employed on the street, that I've gotten good feedback, and it's been beneficial, because we do see just a vast number of these kind of things.
And that's what I was thinking, Kelly, you know, to get information from the manager or from the department, rather than everybody having to sit down and have a work session. But that's gonna be y'all's decision, so, yes, ma'am?
To piggyback off of what Commissioner Link was saying, if we've had recommendations for some sort of citizens advisory body to work with the police department in issues like these before for years, and how do we get that process going, if it could be beneficial to us, in lieu of having work sessions on issues like these?
That'll be something Mr. Gertz will work on, I assume, because I've got basically just about another month or so to go.
Got it.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else want to comment?
Well, just, I mean, I understand, you know, where some of my colleagues are coming from, but, you know, as somebody that does kind of work a little bit in the grant world, sometimes these grants come up, and there's a pretty short turnaround. And so I think, I mean, we still get some oversight on this, because these are submitted, and now it's coming to us, and we could, you know, just because it's submitted doesn't mean that we can approve it, and they can be withdrawn. So there is some oversight of these from the elected officials, it's not just a, regardless of which department it is, just kind of going off and doing their own thing. They do have to come back to us.
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, we have an abstention again. Item number 15 is intersection improvement program approval. And where's that intersection?
It's a whole list of them.
Oh, it's a whole list, okay. Do I have motion?
Option one, I make a motion, we approve option one.
Have a motion, a second.
Second.
Did you want to comment, Ms. Link?
Yeah, I just want to point out that, I mean, a good number of the intersections on this list are in my district, and they definitely need some attention. But also, that Barnett Shoals College Station Road intersection is on this list, and, you know, in the whole Barnett Shoals discussion we just had, and a lot of the comments, comments pointed to the intersection being a problem interfacing with the bike facilities. So I just want to point out, with intersection improvements here, that could very well help eliminate some of those problems.
Ms. Wright, and then Mr.?
Yeah, well, on that note, the intersection, there's striping, especially for the bike lane going through the intersection and going out of College Station, couldn't be done in the temporary mode of it, whereas it would be, it's in the packet, it's different than what's out there because of the temporary status of that.
Because it wasn't decided yet, yeah.
Yeah, that, so, but then this coming in there, too.
Mr. Gertz.
I just want to compliment staff on kind of really having, I think based on kind of a set of observations and conversations with commissioners and the public, having put this package together, and I think it represents a great movement from really an ad hoc kind of program, where hotspots would just come up, to one that's more systematic, in which we're really looking at the components and characteristics of these intersections countywide. And so I think this is a, I mean, while it's a shorter agenda report, I think it's a great step forward.
There's actually four pages up, and there are intersections I use a lot, so I'm glad to see them. Yes, ma'am?
And I just want to reiterate what I said at the work session, or the agenda setting, which is, you know, again, these aren't, I mean, these are the top 10 highest rated, but I would hope that some decision is made, or the decision made on which one to go forward with is, when we're looking at projects that we already have, you know, mobilized out there, that we look at some benefit of getting in and getting all these things done while we're in those areas. The low-hanging fruit, you know, if projects, you know, if we already know and have identified some things that need to be done there, to move ahead with those, perhaps, before others. So just wanted to reiterate that.
I know we had a motion, did we get a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second, y'all ready to vote?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we're down to 16, which is our energy sustainability program. Would anybody like to comment? Mr. Gertz, then Ms. Link, and didn't see any other hands.
Staff provided a little more detail for us on just their evaluation of our array of energy efficiency needs, particularly insofar as the lighting retrofits go, and I appreciate that information. And so with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve items one, A, B, and C.
I'll second, I have a quick comment. The lighting, I don't know if I got that additional information, but I just want to point out the color of that LED lighting. Are we gonna, is staff gonna recommend a specific spectrum? Because you can get off-the-shelf warmer LED lights. I mean, I just bought a big pack of them at Lowe's not long ago. They offer off-the-shelf, I think it's 2,700 Kelvin, which is on that redder spectrum. There's a lot of research coming out these days about the impacts of that, that blue light, you know, and if it's this constant light that you're under, it can have some detrimental impacts, especially on sleep.
Is this the good can?
I don't know what the Kelvin is, I mean, this seems very bright. I just know that I started spending more time in my office, and it's under those brighter LED lights, and I've had a hard time sleeping lately. And the research is, more and more is coming out, so I hope that they would look into buying the warmer spectrum lights, so that our workers can be, you know, hopefully under safer, more healthier light.
Maybe, maybe it's what you're doing in the office instead of the time you're spending it. Okay.
I can see that.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number 17 is approval of limited construction plans for water reclamation facilities. And anybody want to talk about that?
I'll go ahead and make a motion, option one, A, B, C, D, and E.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Eighteen is Government Operations Committee private streets acquisition program and policy, and Mr. Neesmith is not here, but anybody else like to speak to that?
I'll make a motion to approve this, we spoke quite a bit about it at the agenda setting.
Okay, Mr. Harrod.
I jumped ahead of Commissioner Harrod, but he's moving too slow tonight.
That's right. Commissioner Hamby may be on the committee, but he doesn't chair it. But I will agree with his recommendation, so I will second it.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And nineteen is GOC, and this is the booting policy for, I'm trying to make sure, this is the one for the public booting policy. We have an ordinance, Mr. Bearman?
The first is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to towing and impoundment or immobilization and for other purposes. The next is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to parking fines and for other purposes.
Okay. Do we have a motion? You got, okay, we've got a motion and a second.
I will make a motion to approve the report as.
I'm getting punchy. Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item twenty is to pass out with no action the text amendment approval for bars in commercial downtown. Any discussion?
That one came through the last cycle. I'll make a motion that we accept the report from LRC, and it was just some confusion. So once we got it back to committee, it was straightened out, so.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number twenty-one is the, no, we already have twenty-one, twenty-two.
Can we talk about it again today?
Oh, do we have to?
I don't think we figured it out.
So that takes us to item number twenty-three, which is a new business item.
Yeah, twenty-three.
Oh, yeah. And we need a motion to suspend the rules?
I move.
Motion, a second, all in favor, suspending the rules?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And so now we have twenty-three, which is the proposed revised implementation schedule for the SPOLOST 2020 program.
I just wanted to comment, because this came about from our first work session on the topics, in that we had, came with, up with a plan on reviewing the government SPOLOST items, and so this is capturing the schedule and the, when the work sessions are going to be.
Okay.
If I might, too, the agenda, and credit to Commissioner Wright for catching this, is currently worded October the first and the eighth, and it's actually going to be the eighth and the ninth. And we don't need to do anything special after talking with Jean, we just all understand that, and
We're gonna have one on the first.
The record will reflect that. Thank you, Commissioner Wright.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to our public hearing and deliberation from Athens Clark County Planning Commission. And we have two items, and we handle these one at a time. We will do our public hearing from our citizens, then we'll come behind the rail and discuss and make a decision, and then we'll go to the next one. So, start with item number twenty-four, and that's Mr. Neesmith's district is, I don't know who would like to deal with that one.
I'll take care of it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to.
Do we need public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, skip the public comment. Would anybody like to speak to this one? Do we have ten minutes?
I've been waiting a long time.
Jean, did anybody, nobody signed up for ten minutes? I'm sorry, didn't mean to ignore you. It's just been a long night so far.
It's happened before, and it's been approved, and I've left the room, and there's nobody noticed, so. If it happened again, that would be okay. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, I'm Ken Bell, of Bell &amp; Company, and we have prepared the zoning documents on this item that you'll be acting on tonight. This is going to be much more boring than the other things that you've been talking about. This is a situation where it's a small piece of property that my client owns. He purchased 30 acres of the Ridge Point project, and a number of years ago, when the project was being developed, it was a mixed residential use development, which was a combination of townhomes and single-family homes. And at that time, in the CG district, by right, you could have residential uses on the ground floor. But that, those conditions changed while the project was dormant, and during that period, Jim Chapman, who's here this evening as well, purchased the property for development of the property as an active adult, senior 55 and older housing development. And, but in the CG district, in this 2.02 acres, it does not allow residential uses by right, it only allows them through a special use permit, or conditional use permit. And so upon speaking with Brad at the planning department, we didn't want to have a split-zone property for this active adult development. He advised that we just bring it to you guys and let you hopefully change the zoning on that for us, so we'd have just one zoning on the 30-acre development. That's all I have to say. Mr. Chapman is here, and since he is an active adult developer, he has something to say, and thank you for your time and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Hi, Jim Chapman, our properties at 1989 Jimmy Daniel Road. I don't have a long-winded speech, it says Ken said, it's a 30-acre piece of property, roughly 28 of it is RM1, and we have this remnant piece of two acres at CG. To perfect our development, we've spoken in advance with Brad, and he advised that we brought it in front of you to change the entire, to get the entire 30 to be RM, so that we could do our development. So it's pretty straightforward. I'm here if you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else visiting with us tonight want to address this issue? Okay, we'll come back behind the rail. Mr. Bearman, will you read the ordinance for us?
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning a parcel of land comprising approximately 2.02 acres, located at 1989 Jimmy Daniel Road, from CG Commercial General to RM Mixed Density Residential and for other purposes.
Okay, Mr. Hamby.
Sure, I'll just make a motion to approve the planning commission recommendation.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That wasn't quite as exciting as some of the other things, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank both of you, appreciate you waiting so long. Item number 25 is request for a special use AR, which is agricultural residential, on 5.02 acres. Do we have anybody here that would like, do we have anybody in the 10 minutes, Jean? Okay, would anybody like to speak to that item? Item number 25.
We did receive a call from the applicant earlier today that said she may have issues that would keep her from being here tonight, but wanted to be here, so.
So, and this is in Ms. Dickerson's district, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, and then she actually emailed me, she contacted me today, and she said that she sincerely appreciated the support and hoped that we would approve it, and I would like to make the motion to approve the special, I just lost my page, hang on, the special use in the AR.
Second.
The motion, a second, any discussion?
Ordinance.
Mr. Ordinance, thank you.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to special use approval of a rural events facility in the AR Agricultural Residential District for two parcels of land located at 1070 and 1085 Belmont Road, comprising approximately 159.72 acres in total and for other purposes.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion?
I agree.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we're at the point in our meeting that anyone who wishes to speak to us about anything can have your three minutes at the podium. So anyone would like to speak with us, happy to hear from them.
Hey, y'all. Jesse Hool, P.O. Box 445, downtown, or Three Oaks Drive. I wasn't going to speak, but I feel compelled to just share a little something, because I feel like it came up earlier tonight with the questions around items, I think they were 13 and 14. Yeah. I think a lot of people in the community right now are feeling really concerned about the future of our police department right now, there's a lot of upheaval. And a question I hear being asked a lot in a lot of different ways is one around community policing, and how are we going to move forward, and what will community policing look like? And I think what is community policing? Are the police a militarized force, patrolling and monitoring and exerting authority over the community? Or are the police guided by and held accountable to the public and by the community? I assume in good faith that everyone in the room thinks the latter. But then I wonder how we could have that without a high amount of transparency and community involvement. And so much of what dictates the way a police force functions is the equipment they have, and the policies that they have in place around how to use it. And what I've witnessed over the years of being here more than y'all probably want me to be, is a lack of transparency around those things, and oftentimes, questions that don't get fully answered. get fully answered in the public eye. And as I've built relationships with some folks, it doesn't seem like they even get fully answered outside of the public eye. So, for example, there's a presentation in July at the work session, which I'm glad will be on film soon, but still aren't, on the drone policy, which was the only time that there was a public presentation on drones, which the police, among other institutions in town, use. And there's a heavy focus on all the other public safety departments that use drones, and it kind of downplayed the police usage, but we have them for police, too. I was glad to learn that we don't have the kinds of drones that are equipped with grenade launchers like some cities around the country do. That's pretty cool. Although those are available, and it would be cool, I think, for us to be sure that we never have those here, because we probably don't want those. But we do have drones that are equipped with other technology to film and monitor. And the questions that were asked kind of informally in that work session included citations of a policy around how drones could be used. But my understanding is that that policy doesn't actually exist in any formal capacity in the police department, never mind, therefore, could it be actually implemented in any way? So similarly, when we look at things that are in the JAG grant tonight that you all approved, or like having a standard police vehicle, police utility vehicle, just to transport someone to meetings, I think we need to take a hard look at what these, what the equipment is that we're putting forth. And I think the best way to do that is to have more transparency and community involvement in the process. So I really want to support what I heard some folks saying tonight around getting that community task force involved. Thanks, that's, sorry, that wasn't better prepared, but.
Thank you, Mr. Hool.
I appreciate y'all multitasking tonight. My goodness. My name is Sam Raffel, 230 Spalding Circle, Athens, Georgia. I would like to take a minute or two to shed some light on the issue of transparency in EMS and public safety. I wanted to bring to y'all's attention that the group Athens Area Citizens for Better EMS Response Times and Athens for Everyone has joined forces with a new statewide organization called the Georgia Ambulance Transparency Coalition. And this organization is made up of individuals who in the past have brought together the Georgia Tea Party and Common Cause to effect the most comprehensive ethics legislations in the history of the state of Georgia. I think they're going to do it again as it relates to EMS. According to their website, their mission, the Georgia Ambulance Transparency Project is a grassroots initiative dedicated to fighting, fighting to educate public and policymakers on the abuse and corruption that plague emergency medical services in our state. What they are prioritizing right now includes banning ambulance vendors from serving on Department of Public Health EMS Hiring Councils, Hiring Councils, sorry. National EMS serves on two, the Region 10 EMS Council, which serves Athens, Clark County, and the Region 3 EMS Council. They want to require vendors to register with the State Ethics Commission and ban pay-to-play. They want to require mandatory service provider reviews to ensure safety and require that all ambulance providers meet national safety standards and best practices. In addressing our local transparency, or lack thereof, I will turn to a quote from National EMS Chief Operating Officer in a recent red and black article where he said, "We have nothing to hide." So if they have nothing to hide, why are they hiding everything? Their numbers, their EMS Oversight Committee meetings, the nature of the 31,055 delayed responses to 911 emergency calls, the types of calls they routinely downgrade. So the answer to these questions about these issues are questions we need to answer, and I appreciate your time and effort in this regard. I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raffel.
Good evening, mayor and commission. Thank you for being here, having us all involved in local politics. I'm really glad and grateful to have this thing going. I just wanted to call your attention to the urgent need for criminal justice reform in the state of Georgia. Georgia has the world's, or the nation's, largest incarceration rate, and we have 444,000 people plus on probation in the state. One in four Georgians have a criminal record, so, I mean, I'm a statistic in that one, you know, I'm not going to lie about that, but my, my biggest concern right now is the fact that people are suffering, and people don't have a way to escape that suffering because they are, some of them are impoverished, some of them are beaten down by systemic racism, institutionalized discrimination, and things of that nature. And a lot of this ties into criminal justice and the way we treat criminals in this country, in our state, in our city, in our county. And I truly believe that in order to end people's suffering, we can't punish them more. We have to show them that they matter, that they can re-enter society. Even the most hardened criminals that have killed and raped people, those people, as evil as they may seem, need help. And to deny them that is to deny them their humanity. And especially when you're doing that to people who, you know, have committed nonviolent crimes such as smoking weed. I mean, you know, I got arrested on campus for smoking weed, you know, that messed my life up for a year, and it got me involved in this fight because I see that I was privileged, and I am privileged, and I got out of that situation fairly easily. And a lot of other people, that'll mess your life up for the rest of your material existence here. And so there's, there's a couple of things that we can do as a local municipality to alleviate these problems. For one, decriminalize cannabis. For two, end cash bail. Three, make communication out of the jails free. So that means you don't have to pay to call, you don't have to pay to email. And four, and this might not be so much a mayor and commission thing, this is more of a school board thing, but I think you guys can work together on this, end zero tolerance policies. Educate people on, on crime and drug use, and get the young people, prevent them from going to jail.
Sir, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, did you, I don't believe you gave us your name either.
My name is Nathan Wasserman. I live at 200 Old Princeton Road.
Thank you, Mr. Wasserman.
Good evening, mayor and commission. My name's Brian Broderick. I live at 117 South Main Street in Watkinsville. I also am a small business owner here in downtown Athens at 125 West Washington Street, a past chairman of the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce, a past member of the Athens Downtown Development Authority, and a current parking committee member of that body. First of all, I want to say thank you. You had a ordinance, proposed ordinance in front of you tonight for related to booting on private property, and you indicated and showed a willingness to take a month, to take a look at that and listen, and I really appreciate that. I think that's a great signal to the business community that you're willing to do that, and I appreciate that. Tonight, I'm here representing several local property owners who are concerned about that proposed ordinance. They include my primary client, Landmark Properties, the owner and manager of the Mark, a mixed-use project along Oconee Street, as well as the owners of One Press Place, the owners of the Chastain Building, the owners of the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce Building, and the owners of the new Hyatt Place Hotel downtown, which all authorize me to share some thoughts on their behalf. In total, those represent 700,000 square feet of space downtown and thousands of parking spaces potentially impacted by this ordinance. I'd like to provide an overview of our concerns about the proposed ordinance. Number one, moving to an approach that creates towing as the only option requires significant additional staffing, costs more for our residents and visitors, and creates safety problems for those who may have to travel out of town or walk at night to recover a vehicle. As a practical matter, there's significant difficulties for towing inside of parking decks. The Mark and several of the other people I referenced have decks. There's very few tow trucks in town that can actually get in those decks, so the inability to boot creates a problem. A ban on booting makes it much harder for my client, Landmark, and others I represent to lease retail and office spaces that require quick turnover. They need a parking management plan that allows for quick turnover, and towing is not the quickest option. They typically have one vendor, they have to come and they have to go. We need a consistent parking and management approach. In fact, it's really helped since we've had a parking management program at the Mark for us to begin to lease the retail there, which has been a struggle, because the students simply park on the street, and there's not a consistent enforcement approach. The ban also has a potentially outsized impact on churches, banks, other key downtown business owners, as well as hospitals, where parking is at a premium, they're using decks, and efficient parking management is vital. I'd also add that I know there's around booting downtown. I was a part of the parking committee and the ADDA when that was added, but I think everyone here recognizes on some level that booting is necessary for downtown businesses and for turnover downtown. I'd ask for the same thought process to go into it for private owners who don't have the ability to ticket and enforce. My belief in those I'm speaking for tonight is that the ordinance is a bit of an overreaction. We're interested in working with the Government Operations Committee on, to share some best practices, to work with what we've seen from other property managers, and so we can more effectively manage our property, and we're open to a variety of options in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broderick. Anyone else wish to speak to us?
My name's Frank Pittman. I live at 1400 Saxon Road in Watkinsville. A lot of you know me as an engineer here locally in town, but I'm here, actually wear two hats. I also own a parking management business for right at 25 years now, so I'm not here representing any property owners, but I'm speaking on the same topic that Brian just spoke on, kind of from a historical standpoint. I've managed properties as far as parking goes, including the Development Authority and a bunch of private owners around town. I've advised them on how to deal with parking situations. I think everybody here realizes that parking in downtown is, is an ongoing problem. It has been for a number of years. You know, we've, I've had cars booted, I've had cars towed from places. I personally had my car booted. I've had my car towed before. I'd much rather be booted than towed, just because it's cheaper to get unbooted, it's easier to get unbooted. From a parking management standpoint, it's, you make mistakes. I've towed the wrong cars before. I've booted the wrong cars. It's a lot easier to undo those mistakes in a booting situation than it is in a towing situation. I've had to go pick people up and drive them to Madison County to a tow company and pay for their car that got towed in the middle of the night. You know, depending on towing being your only option creates a lot of concerns. Brian mentioned the, trying to tow in some of these private decks is almost impossible. It backs up traffic. You know, they're, if you go down to Press Place, for instance, I mean, they've, they've for years and years had problems with students coming and taking all their employee parking spaces. They decided to, they had to go install a bunch of expensive gatearms to try to have parking for their employees. They did that before. There was a private booting company locally to work with, but if they'd had a booting company, they could have saved that money. They're constantly having to work on these gatearms. Their booting solves those problems, because, you know, I think a lot of people see, I think of these, these booting companies as being predatory, and they're jumping out of the bushes and booting a car because somebody ran in a store, ran across the street to eat. But that's, that's not the only problem with parking. It's, it's students parking in, on private property and going to class. Private property owners have no ticketing rights. You know, the, the street parking's a little bit different. You guys can, can, can ticket cars, they can go to court. Private property owners don't have that, that ability to do. So I appreciate, as Brian said, I appreciate y'all, y'all putting this on hold and thinking about it for a little bit. Would love to work with you guys and maybe come up with a, with a booting policy with some regulations as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Anyone else wish to speak to us tonight? Okay, this is the time of night that we have reports from our elected officials and our staff, and I get to do the first one. And I've got several things tonight. The first I have is an adopt proclamation, and let me see who that's from. All the way to the back of my book, I'm sorry. And, and the organization that's going to help us with that is Genetics Graduate Student Association, and they're going to adopt Grant Allen Drive from Millet Avenue to Lumpkin Street, and we would like to thank them for doing that. And as always, I wish it wasn't necessary that people would quit throwing the trash out of their car, and we wouldn't have this problem. The, the second thing I have is that as part of the downtown public health study, there was a recommendation that we have a minimum drink price for downtown bars, and I would like to refer that to our Legislative Review Committee to look at.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Wright's going to make them all free, so I don't know if that's the right committee to.
It's a drink issue. It goes to LRC. It's just natural. We've got this.
Yeah. That's legislative issue, I'm sorry. It seems like everything we do is legislative issue. I tried to divide them up. And then the third item I have is the Upper Oconee Water Basin Authority. Many of you, and probably those watching on TV and a few that are left here, don't even know what it is, but it's, it's the oversight group that, that, that takes care of the Bear Creek Reservoir, and that's, that's a four-county operation. It's Athens, Jackson, Oconee, and Walton Counties. The county chairs of each county serve as the primary voting member of that organization, and then each has an elected person from their body that serves as their alternate if they're not there. And then we also have a proportional vote that is, that can be a citizen, or it can be a, a member of the government, and that all of our positions have expired now, with the exception of mayor, and of course, the mayor stays on that permanently as long as they're mayor. So tonight, I want to let y'all know that we're, that while I'm, and I've discussed this with Mr. Gertz, and we're in agreement on it, that Mr. Andy Harrod would be my alternate. And then we, our proportional member will be former Commissioner Harry Sims, and his alternate will be Frank Stevens. And then, of course, as soon as I leave office, Mr. Gertz will come in, and he'll take over as the primary voting member. And then the final thing, and I know Mr. Harrod is going to be really excited about this, is that I'm going to refer the booting issue back to, private booting, back to our Government Operations Committee. And, and, and I don't mean to be, be being facetious with y'all, but I had no idea that we had the amount of businesses in town, that that was, that that's a very essential part of their business, and, and we didn't hear from them when we were looking at this issue in the committee to begin with, so I think we need to take another, another shot at it. So, and with that, I will, do you have anything, Mr. Williams?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Bearman?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well, we're going to start now with you, Mr. Harrod, and you can fuss that if you want to, and we'll work our way around and finish with, with Ms. Dickerson.
I, I don't have anything to say.
I almost choked on my water at that. Ms. Bell?
I want to thank you for the opportunity, for serving on the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. It was an awf- awesome experience. I think probably one of the extra blessings was to get to travel all over the state, that we got to visit twice a year for the retreats and see what they had done. We had the opportunity last year to be the host, Athens did, to have the, the groups to come to our city. But that was an awesome, awesome, and I'll always be grateful, because I got to see what we've done in our state for affordable housing, and if it was not for GIC, it would not have happened the way it has. The lady that was the inspiration and did the work for Karen Tinsley was the one that was killed in Oconee County last spring, and we just had our, you were there for the retreat, for the session this past week. She did an awesome job with what she did and what she gathered with the different people in our state, and thank you again. Sharon and I got to travel a lot together. That was also another wonderful part of it all, so, thank you.
Thank you, and thank y'all for doing all that work.
Madam Mayor, I just make a motion we adjourn.
I don't know how to respond to that. Emotions out.
I'd like to call the question, please. Madam Mayor, I do have a quick statement. I am going to be gone for the next voting meeting, so the meeting after that in December will be my last voting meeting. I've tried very hard not to miss any of the voting meetings. The only ones I've missed were because I had to work, basically, running Ath Fest all those years. So I'm taking a vacation for the first time since I've been a Commissioner, and I'm going out of town next month, so I'll not be here, but I'll be here for December. Thank you.
Hope you have a good time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say that I have a street name change request coming that I wanted to talk to you about so that maybe we can get the ball rolling properly in November. Luckily, they have picked a street that has no addresses on it, so hopefully it'll be a smooth, brilliant idea, but I'll get the details to you. I was wondering if we could have a code enforcement review come to one of our committees. I've heard that our new overgrown vegetation ordinance might need some tweaking with that, and I think that the code enforcement might be able to let us know what they are seeing on the front line, that we might be able to do to improve the ordinance for them to be able to do their part, but I wasn't sure how to bring that up except now.
I'm thinking probably because I've read that about, about that in government publications, and they probably put it into a committee.
Yeah.
So LRC had weed, the overgrown vegetation, didn't we?
Sounds like it.
Yeah, and so if that...
Sounds like a good place to put it back.
Yeah, so we'll take it back if that's appropriate with you, but yet...
Well, I will go ahead and put that in tonight so it can start moving.
Okay.
And put that into committee to look at, just look at the code enforcement, or the enforcement of ordinances and see if we need to change any of our, I'm trying to think of the terminology, quality-of-life ordinances, maintenance ordinances.
Yeah, because, yeah, that covers it. Thank you. And then I also wanted to share that we have hot-off-the-press pamphlets for litter laws, and I gave a stack of these in all the commissioners' mailboxes, and this is part of the litter abatement group that works quarterly, and these were given out this week at it. So it's outlining the different laws, as well as fines and penalties, and who to call for the different areas that it might be, and so this is a team effort that came out of that group, and I'm not sure how the distribution's going to be, but it started, and I started with you guys in your mailbox, but you should be seeing these around town. Those of you who like to remind their neighbors of this, and I know, or putting them in places that can help the communication of it, that's, and that's all I have to share. Thank you.
That's right.
I just want to talk a little bit about criminal justice a little bit. It's on a lot of folks' minds these days, and we did have a couple items related to police equipment and sheriff's equipment, and it came out that we've got a lot of mental health patients in our jail, which is unfortunately the case all across the country, so I'd like to ask the manager, and I imagine some of this will come out through the audit report that we're going to be getting in the next couple of weeks, what kind of services do we have at our jail for our mentally ill inmates? What kind of programming? And I also want to advocate, once again, for that Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee. I know that Kelly and I have brought it up in the past, and it was a recommendation that came out of a task force from many years ago at this point. I feel like a lot of the questions and problems that we're facing in this community could be transparently and equitably addressed through a citizen committee that has representation for many aspects of the community. You know, it would give a formal outlet for our public safety, our police, and our criminal justice, our judges, and as well as our fire safety staff to have a formal interaction with community leaders and head off, you know, issues of, you know, non-transparency. And also, it would give the community kind of a intermediary to communicate with our public safety and our criminal justice staff and department heads, just that kind of go-between. I feel like, you know, a lot of communities have these, and some kind of citizen outlet to guide discussions, to guide policy, and to hopefully head problems and issues off at the path.
Actually, I didn't have anything tonight to bring to the body, but I will note that over about the last six weeks, I've been meeting with the array of appointed and elected and constitutional officers, as well as state personnel who comprise our area criminal justice system, and I'm doing that with the intent of having an ongoing forum in which those folks can productively interact to reduce recidivism, create a safer community, and save the taxpayer funds.
I just wanted to reiterate what Commissioner Link had to say about the need for transparency in our criminal justice system. There is, as some members of the audience tonight noted, some loss of faith with our Sheriff's Department and our Police Department currently for, as a result of some of these issues we've seen and that I brought up tonight at this meeting regarding how we decide what we're going to spend money on and how we decide we want to ensure that our communities stay safe. When we vote on budget amendments and grant applications like we did tonight, we are choosing to value equipment over other means of making sure our communities are healthy and vibrant and that the people who comprise them have opportunities not to get involved in crime in the first place. So I just want to continue to put that in the ears of my fellow commissioners, that every time we make votes like those, we're, you know, that's where those decisions accumulate that create the kind of situation where our communities don't feel listened to or don't feel safe ultimately, and I look forward to hopefully having more transparency in the future.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few things. We all received some information that I don't know, got publicized very well in the community, so I wanted to share from Valerie Bell, the Executive Director of the Athens Regional Library System. The Athens-Clark County Library was awarded a Community Catalyst National Leadership Grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Services for $150,000. It's a two-year grant. It's only, it's one of only 12 that were awarded nationwide out of 51 applications, so that says a huge amount about our library. The grant will establish a partnership with UGA School of Social Work to create a program to place social work student interns at the library to identify specific needs of at-risk community members and to share information about social services while advocating for those who have difficulties accessing those services, and their goal is to transform the library into a trauma-informed facility, and I think that's just, that's awesome, and I applaud her, their work on getting that. Also wanted to, for the record, because I know it did not go into the record at the agenda setting, I'll keep this somewhat brief, but I do want to recognize that on September 7th, the Envision Athens effort and the Athens-Clark County Planning Department received the Georgia Planning Association's Outstanding Planning Process Award, which recognizes the 18-month Envision Athens Planning Process that involved a diverse cross-section of the Athens-Clark County community. At that recognition, I asked everyone to come forward, but one individual who sits behind the rail did not listen to instructions and did not come forward, so I'm going to point him out tonight. He did participate, Commissioner Mike Hamby, in the process, but did not come forward for the photo and to be recognized, but he's been part of the Steering Committee and now is part of the Implementation Oversight Committee.
Commissioner Dickerson's just feeling guilty about it.
Yes. In addition, I'd like to, I'd like to also point out our manager, Blaine Williams, who brought this idea forward more than three years ago, 25, what year is this? Yeah, 23 years ago, brought forward the idea for a community-wide visioning effort and planted that seed. It took a little while to grow because a lot of people were not sure what that all meant, and everybody's protecting their turf, but all of our institutional partners, the Clark County School District, the Housing Authority, the Chamber of Commerce, University of Georgia, United Way, City of Warrnambool, Piedmont, Regional St. Mary's, Georgia Power, and Athens Technical College have all been integral, have had an integral role in this process. But I also want to point out that we had one individual who worked for the Athens-Clark County Government who played a very important role in that planning process, and that was Gavin Hassimer, who's one of our, I guess he's a senior planner, and under the direction of our wonderful Planning Director Brad Griffin, Gavin headed up the development of the comprehensive plan, which was informed by the effort, the Envision Athens planning effort, and worked side-by-side with our consultant and the 38th member, and that's a lot of people to work with, Steering Committee, to manage the public input process. And, you know, as a result, we now have not just a comprehensive plan, but we have an action agenda for the Envision Athens, and these are, these are living, breathing documents that are currently working today. I mean, I've been to, we've had, oh, good lord, 50 meetings probably since we, since we moved forward with implementation with these community members, and I am just so thrilled to go to these meetings and finding people who sit at the table who said, you know, you know, this is the most important thing, if I don't get anything out of this, is having people sit at the table that I haven't ever had the opportunity to sit at the table with and talk about the issues that we all, you know, participate in. So I applaud Gavin's effort and appreciate the opportunity to participate in that as both the Chair for the Steering Committee and, co-chair of the Steering Committee and Chair of the Implementation Oversight Committee. Also, just want to say I appreciate the opportunity to be appointed to the housing, to Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. That was a great experience. The leadership of both Rob Trevino, our former Housing and Community Development Director, and Deborah Lonan have been invaluable to me. I've learned a lot about housing. I intend to continue to participate, at least as a citizen, when my term is up, and I will say, it was a joy to travel with Diane. I don't know that she felt the same way when I got her lost a few times and we started hearing banjos in the woods, but it was a fun, it was a fun experience to, you know, to have that time and to grow closer as friends.
I'd be kind of interested in hearing that story.
Yeah, I bet you're. And I want to, I want to end this, I want to end this on a fun note. We learned today, I believe it was today, we learned that Drew Wrestler, our Public Works Director, he and his wife welcomed a baby girl today, and I have to say that I'm so glad it was a girl, not a boy, because we would have had to have named him Barney. Barnett Shoals, get it? We've only been, we, I have to feed you, I know, it's really late. Anyway, with that, I ask, I motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move into executive session.